Stand by. Thirty away. Fifteen. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021 Board of County Commission Meeting. I'm Akeem Ashford, Director of Communications. Commissioners want your input into the redistricting boundaries of commissioned districts. Join us Monday, November 15th for a redistricting Town Hall. The Town Hall will begin at 6:30 at the WSU Campus of Applied Sciences and Technology. For more information, continue to check the Sedgwick County website and social media pages. The Register of Deeds is proud to partner with the Salvation Army and the Fidelity Bank to provide warm coats to children this winter. The mission is to keep children warm by donating new and gently warm coats and other winter items. Donations will be accepted at 216 South Market across the street from Fidelity Bank, beginning tomorrow, November 4th through the 5th, from 7:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. Commissioners, we are very excited to welcome Mr. Butch Post, Butch Post, excuse me, KEMA President and John Stroudell. He is the Assistant Coordinator for Cowley County Emergency Management, as well as the Regional Vice President for KEMA. We're going to invite them to the podium to present to our very own Julie Stimson with the new, the best new Emergency Manager Award for 2020 and 2021. Chairman?
Good morning, sirs, and welcome to the Commission Meeting.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. Like you said, my name is Butch Post. I'm the current President of Kansas Emergency Management Association. My day-to-day job is Rooks County Emergency Management Director. For those of you that don't know, that's just a little north of Hays, Plainfield and Stockton. You know, most people don't know where that's at. So, the nominations for these awards are from current KEMA members that have witnessed the positive influence of their nominee in the past year, or in some cases, years. The Executive Board of KEMA then reviews the nominations and then they vote on the various recipients. Julie Stimson, Sedgwick County Director of Emergency Management, was chosen to receive the 2021 Outstanding New Emergency Management Professional of the Year. I want to give you a little background on the new Emergency Manager of the Year Award and its criteria for the nominees. The Colonel Malin G. Weed Outstanding New Emergency Management Professional of the Year is presented to an individual who, at the time of the KEMA Conference in September, has served less than 24 months and has displayed enthusiasm, made specific accomplishments and/or improvements in the local program. This award was renamed to honor Colonel Malone G. Weed, who is a former Director of Kansas Division of Emergency Preparedness. And I want to share a portion of the nomination letter that was sent to the KEMA Board for their consideration. On her first day, on the first day of her job, Julie faced several obstacles. Those include: being in an unprecedented global pandemic, a population of 500,000 citizens, local politicians and health officials at odds over the best course of action, a department that was devastated by turnover, strained relationships from the previous director both internally and with other agencies, and a new budget to work on. Despite being thrown headfirst into the deep end, Julie has thrived in her role and has enthusiastically embraced the challenges. Morale within the department has rebounded, turnover stabilized, and she has made many visits as COVID, made as many visits as COVID would allow with other departments and agencies, making great strides in mending fences and rebuilding relationships. She has quickly built a level of confidence within the Board of County Commissioners who already trust her knowledge and expertise. She has worked tirelessly to fill the gaps in her knowledge regarding local threats and the intricacies involved with being a county emergency manager. Since taking on her new role as Director of Sedgwick County Emergency Management, Julie has been fighting and succeeding to get the department back on solid ground. On a personal note, I have not had the opportunity to work with Julie yet, and I guess in our world of emergency management, that's a good thing. Another thing about our awards I'd like to share is that they're unique in certain aspects. Most of the time, the nominee does not know that they're even nominated. And the KEMA Board votes on that, and we do not even know the results. We have an awards chair. They keep that secret until the conference itself. There's been discussion on whether this is a proper way to do it or not, and I can tell you the surprise look on Julie's face or others when they received their awards, or when they're nominated, and then the real shock of receiving the award even makes it more impactful, in my opinion. And I think talking with Julie this morning, she would agree with that, that it really does make it a lot more memorable event. So, in conclusion, it is now my privilege to present the 2021 New Emergency Management Professional of the Year Award to Julie Stimson.
I just want to say thank you for all the support. It definitely was challenging walking in to this new role. Last year, we have a lot of good things to come. I've got an amazing team in place, and we're going to do a lot of good things for the community and get things back on track. So, I just want to thank everyone for their support and look forward to the years coming ahead. Thank you.
Julie, thank you. When you were first hired and we all got to meet you and saw your background, we thought, boy, the fingers were crossed. We could have a real winner here. And you truly have proven that under these trying times, you were a calm in the storm and a great leader and great in using all your resources in your background. It just, the county and our region is a better place because of you. So, that's from my opinion. So, I want to thank you and congratulations. Well deserved.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you again, Julie.
All right, Commissioners, just to make a clarification, I mentioned the, for the Town Hall, for the redistricting Town Hall, I mentioned the WSU Campus of Applied Sciences. It's actually going to be NCAT, which is 4004 North Webb. Okay. Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda, you have a proclamation declaring Wichita Junior ROTC Leadership Week, a proclamation declaring PBS Kansas Veterans Coming Home Salute Day, under new business, a discussion of donation requests from humankind, a resolution regulating the discharge of firearms across property boundaries, a public hearing for the proposed adoption of the Uniform Plumbing Code 2021 edition, public hearing for the proposed adoption of the International Mechanical Code 2021 edition, the approval of sub-recipient agreement between Sedgwick County and SMG related to the 2021 American Rescue Plan, or ARPA, shuttered venue operating grant, approval of the contract template for EMT to paramedic education program, a presentation of the quarterly financial report, and a report of the bids and boards of, excuse me, the boards of bids and contracts, regular meeting on October 28th, 2021. With that, Chairman, I'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Akeem. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Wednesday, November 3rd, Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners Meeting. With that, Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. And before we get started, I know we've got a pretty good crowd here. A couple of items. We will have an off-agenda item related to a letter that we discussed yesterday that we'll be sending to Topeka, but we'll do that at the, near the end of the last part of the new business. So, that'll be delayed. Next week, we have a meeting, we've moved our meeting to 8:30 in the morning to accommodate for the parade, Veterans Parade, or the, I mean, the ROTC, sorry. Veterans ROTC, you know, same. And then, and lastly, because there is a crowd here, we, at the end of the last meeting two weeks ago, we mentioned that the discharge of firearms item would be number one on the agenda, but it's been moved to number two to accommodate requests from humans, humankind is the number one. So, if you're here on the firearms issue, it's delayed one spot. So, with that, okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Commissioners, you received, we received one email from the public agenda via email correspondence. Does anybody have any comments on that? If not, I'll make a motion to receive and file. Motion to receive and file. The email message we received under public comment. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And under public agenda that have signed up, we have Rachel Mayberry here from... Rachel, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, County Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this morning. My name is Rachel Mayberry. I'm Senior Director of Public Policy and Communications at Hartspring. I'm a registered lobbyist with the state representing Hartspring. We are located at 8700 East 29th Street North in Wichita. Our organization is in Chairman Meitzner's district. Hartspring has been in the Wichita community since 1934. We employ 500 staff members and serve almost 1,000 children a year in 17 counties in Kansas through therapeutic and educational services. In March of 2021, President Biden approved the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, guaranteeing direct relief to cities and towns in the U.S. intended to combat COVID-19 pandemic. The U.S. Department of Labor says the goal of ARPA was to provide immediate relief. With the goal of providing immediate relief, we encourage this body to quickly and efficiently distribute ARPA funds to the community. We need them now, not in 2023, not in 2024. We need them now. To put this in perspective, Hartspring closed or reduced services twice during the pandemic with a loss of $2.12 million in revenue. We've paid $1.24 million in hazard or hero pay and COVID pay, and that's continuing to grow due to OSHA's requirement that we pay unlimited COVID pay to our employees who have been exposed or test positive for COVID. Being a healthcare provider, that is a requirement for us. We've rescheduled or canceled or modified 10 events with a loss of $170,000, and we've spent more than $109,000 in additional PPE and cleaning equipment. Now, we're looking at a $300,000 bill a month to continue testing our employees for COVID-19 due to KDHE's discontinuing funding for WSU's MDL. Hartspring serves some of the most vulnerable children in our community. Not testing our staff is neither responsible nor respective to our families who trust us to provide healthy services for their family. Because of this loss in revenue and the added expenses, we are seeking to combine $14 million in ARPA funding from the state, county, and city. Unlike other healthcare organizations and education organizations, we do not qualify for federal relief funds that have been released over the last 18 months. With that money, we have three primary objectives: frontline healthcare employee relief, transitional housing, and workforce development. We employ 500 Wychetans, making us one of the largest nonprofits in the city. Our essential frontline healthcare workers were not eligible for the same rescue funding that other healthcare organizations received. However, we face similar staffing crisis. Fatigue, burnout, childcare insecurity, and inadequate rates of pay plague our industry and our organization. Within frontline healthcare employee relief, we've increased our minimum wage to $15 an hour this past Monday. We're enhancing staff training and developing and development to exceed pre-COVID levels. We are partnering with WSU to provide all direct care providers access to the Direct Support Professional Badge Program at no cost to the employee. And we want to invest in our community and our staff by building an onsite childcare facility that supports shift workers in second and third shift, something that's desperately needed in our city. Within transitional housing, our goal is to prepare students aging out of the secondary education system for greater independence and lifelong success. By building three transitional homes, we will be able to support 12 students at a time with the opportunity to experience a more independent setting prior to moving to their adult community setting. According to the CDC, 17% of children ages 3 through 17 have a developmental or intellectual disability. This is an increasing trend over time and represents our future workforce. We must prepare our children now and our employers now to take that workforce into the future. Our goal within workforce development is to provide consultative training statewide on how to prepare children for the workforce, train community-based professionals on how to work with and employ children with, or adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and support children and families to help them achieve greater independence and autonomy in the future. Hartspring believes the most strategic lever point to progress is to invest in our community, and we want to ensure opportunities for all. An investment of ARPA funding will provide good-paying jobs, educational support, modernization to infrastructure, affordable transitional housing, and expanded employment training services to support and train the current and future workforce. Again, we urge you to quickly and efficiently distribute the ARPA funds to the community. I thank you for your opportunity to speak today, and I will stand for any questions you might have.
Rachel, thank you for addressing this. Challenging indeed. I assume you're in communication with our staff on the ARPA funding stuff?
We reached out to the Sedgwick County Health Department on Friday when we received the MDL letter. I also reached out to KDHE and then the Wichita Eagle. At this point, we still have not received any answers from Sedgwick County or the Health Department at the state. What we have received is through the reporter at Wichita Eagle. I have been asked to speak to Lieutenant Governor Tolan with a group from the chamber. So, that's where we're at. But we still have not received any communication from the state or the county about the ARPA funds in regards to testing.
Okay. Well, we have a, we're addressing that later on with our letter. So, I think we're all on the same page about testing. So, I was just saying to make sure that the ARPA rules kind of limit the Commission from being directly involved with applications and decisions. So, there is a process. If you want to get on our website, make sure that you're, do a needs assessment.
Yes, we filled that out, multiples of our staff member. We're just hoping that the funds get released soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate. Any other questions? I don't, I don't see any. Thank you for addressing us. Yes. Okay. I don't see any, anybody else from the public want to address the Commission? I don't see any, so make a motion to receive and file. There's a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Onbok Meeting Minutes of September 28th, 2021.
Commissioners, we received a copy of the minutes for the Onbok Meeting. If it's all right with you, I'll combine item A and B together, which is the minutes of the Onbok Meeting on September 28th and a regular meeting of the Commissioners on October 6th. Is there any questions about any one of those or comments or corrections? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve. Motion in second, being no comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item C, Proclamation Declaring Wichita Junior ROTC Leadership Week.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the honor to read this proclamation. Whereas Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps was officially implemented in American high schools in 1916, it began in Kansas in 1917 and in Wichita in 1994, making this our 27th anniversary. And whereas cadet leadership programs were started in select middle schools in 1997, making Wichita a leader in the nation in this initiative. And whereas JROTC and leadership programs are recognized in Wichita for building citizenship and good character in our youth. And whereas there are now more than 2,400 Wichita youth participating as cadets in 17 of our public schools, now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 6th to the 12th, 2021, as Wichita Junior ROTC Leadership Week, in recognition of these fine young men and women who are becoming better leaders and citizens for the future through their involvement in the Junior ROTC and leadership programs. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
Second. There's a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to let you know that we do have Colonel Hester in the audience. He is the Director of JROTC Leadership Instruction for USD 259 and a close, personal friend of mine and one of the finest leaders that I know. In addition, we have Cadets Jesse Bartlett, Nicole Damari, and Elizabeth Unruh, Alyssa Unruh with us today. They are the Leadership Corps for JROTC. Each year, I've had the opportunity to sit on their selection board, so I've had an opportunity to meet each and every one of these individuals. And so they're going to have a few words to say. At the end of that, I'd like to invite the Commission to join me down on the floor so that we can get a picture with the JROTC cadets. I want to make a reminder that November 6th coming up is the annual Veterans Day Parade. It'll start at 11 o'clock, starts right out in front of the courthouse here, and it terminates down at Waterwalk. And there will be a ceremony down at Waterwalk following that. We invite all veterans and everyone that wants to support our veterans to please attend that. And as Commissioner, Chairman Meitzner mentioned a moment ago, our next meeting next Wednesday is actually going to start a half an hour early at 8:30, because one of the fantastic things that JROTC does each year in honor of our nation's veterans is that they hold a formal military parade. And if you've never had an opportunity to see a formal military parade, it is impressive, especially when you see 2,400 cadets pass in review in honor of the veterans. So, with that, I want to turn it over to our commanders and the Leadership Corps of JROTC. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having us today. I'm Cadet Colonel Jesse Bartlett. I'm a senior at Northeast Magna High School, and I'm the active Corps Commander of the Wichita JRC and Leadership Programs. I first would like to thank you all in reviewing our proclamation in regards to making this JRC and Leadership Week. I just wanted to share a couple of words on what we do in JRC, as well as kind of our mission. JROTC, or Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, is a leadership training program which is set in our USD 259 district. We have all not, all, all nine, yeah, all eight of our high schools, my apologies, have a JRC program. We have five Army JRC programs, two Air Force JRC programs, and one Marine Corps JRC program. We also have nine middle school leadership programs, which are, which is a more basic version of the JRC program. And in these programs, we teach all of our, we teach all of our cadets the basic leadership skills, as well as to be a better citizen in our society. I would also like to invite all of you to come to the Veterans Day Parade, as well as the Veterans Day Ceremony, which will be on 6 November 2021, as well as, as well as 10 November 2021, in order to present the approval of this proclamation. That's all I've got. I will turn it over to Cadet Command Sergeant Major Unruh.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate it, and thank you for reviewing our proclamation. This is a very amazing thing for us. The JRC has helped not only me, but I know many other cadets. It's, it helps you grow as a person and as a cadet and make you a better leader, as well as a better citizen. And again, we invite you all to our Veterans Day Parade and ceremony. We'd love to see you all there. It's a very wonderful thing if you guys could come. But yeah, thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Any other comments? There you go.
Yes. My name is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Damari. I'm a senior at Northeast Magna, and one thing I would like to emphasize is, of course, a couple of years ago, we weren't able to have the Veterans Day Parade and Veterans Day Ceremony, and I'm very lucky that this year we're making it happen. I've been waiting for it for since freshman year, since I've missed two years. And we invite you to present the proclamation at the Veterans Day Ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you. And I requested a photograph. We'll take a one-minute break, and we'll come around the corner and take a photograph, and then we'll be right back.
I'll also make a quick comment. Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say, I've attended that event at Century 2 numerous times, and I am very impressed. And you see thousands of youth dressed in their uniforms very proudly, learning customs and courtesies, learning how to do all those things, learning respect and responsibility and leadership. It's very impressive. So, thank you for what you're doing. I met just one Junior ROTC Cadet last night who's on the way to the Air Force Academy, and I just, I'm reminded how important it is on the individual basis, the things that you all are involved in and the leadership goals that it creates by being a part of this great organization. So, thank you, Colonel Hester, for all you do, and thank you, young people, for being part of this great organization and for demonstrating leadership in the way that you are. So, thank you so much for that, and thank you for the invitation.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell.
We can proceed. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, Proclamation declaring PBS Kansas Veterans Coming Home Salute Day.
It's Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas veterans have stepped forward to serve our country and defend our way of life, with honor and distinction, generations of servicemen and women have taken up arms to win our independence, preserve our union, and secure our freedom. These heroes have put their lives on the line so that we might live in a world that is safer, freer, and more just, and we owe them a profound debt of gratitude. And whereas many veterans have continued their life of service through countless hours working to improve our communities, their dedication to serving fellow veterans and others in the veteran community provides countless benefits for years to come. Their tireless service, can-do attitude, and humility is an example for all of us. And whereas veterans returning home from service have earned our respect and deserve our recognition as they strive to better their community they call home. Coming back to civilian life brings new challenges and new opportunities and compelling stories of courage and accomplishment. And whereas we must come together as a community to honor these veterans and extend our commitment to welcome them home, learn from their sacrifice, and help them succeed in all that they do. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Pete Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize November the 6th, 2021, as PBS Kansas Veterans Coming Home Salute Day, with respect for and in recognition of the contributions of our service members that have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world and at home." Mr. Chairman, I would be pleased to motion that we would adopt this proclamation.
Second. There's a motion in a second. I don't see any questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries.
Chairman, may I continue? Um, I'll say again, thank you, Chairman. I would like to recognize Victor Hogstrom. If you don't know Victor, he is a firecracker for this community. He has really taken our KPTS station and, and turned it around and made it so wonderful. It's always been great, but it's really great now. And so I want to say thank you for your leadership. But KPTS, PBS Kansas, has really invested in veterans, and I've been, and I've enjoyed the last couple of years being able to sit at the table and talk about this event, the Veterans Coming Home Event, really does recognize our veterans. If you think back in history, there was a time when veterans coming home, they were not celebrated, they were not, they were not welcomed. Many times, they were despised and rejected by our communities. And so we, we look backwards and say, that was wrong. Let's do the right thing. Let's show them love. Let's show them appreciation and, and respect. What they did was hard, and what they did was for us and for our country, and we, we want to love them and, and respect them. So I am so glad that KPTS is leading this community to make this important for our community. And I will talk about the event a little bit in just a moment, but before I do that, Victor, would you like to introduce your guests and talk about the event a little bit? I would sure like to give you the chance to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Let me introduce Terry Brooks, our Development Director, Lynn Wolf, the person who's directly responsible for the event coming up on the 6th of this month, and you are all invited, everyone, even the, your television audience. And then, of course, Jennifer Keller is our Marketing Director. And we want to say how much we appreciate the recognition of this event. We've done it now for about six years, and PBS Kansas will continue to honor our veterans because the veterans mean so much to America. Like you said, we didn't, people did not recognize them, but we, for our community, will always lead the way toward doing this because we want to make sure that our veterans are honored. And by the presentation of this proclamation, you're not only supporting your veterans as you normally do and usually would do, but you're supporting your public television's, station's effort to really continue this good work. This is what public television does in the community. It's not only about programming and fundraising, it is about service. Service that will uplift our community, inform and educate, a service that will bring our community and members of the community together as one wholesome, functioning society. And again, I say thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your warm gesture. It is truly appreciated.
Okay. Thank you. Got a couple of comments. Victor, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Victor, and all of the folks at PBS for recognizing our veterans consistently and the programming that you put on in all other realms. I want to particularly thank you, Victor and Terry, for the tour of your new building. It is spectacular. I am very excited, particularly about the children's, what is it?
Education and Discovery Center.
Yes. It just seems like you're really stepping up your game, and I appreciate what you do for this community. That's a big step to take, knowing that you have to do all of that fundraising and, and make it work. So I appreciate what you do. I think that we forget how important our public television is. That's where we're watching us right now.
Yes.
So thank you for being here, and thank you for taking this on. I appreciate both, all of you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And Victor, everyone, thank you very much for being here to honor our veterans. It's near and dear to my heart. Obviously, Commissioner Howell and I are both veterans. I had the opportunity, along with about 6 million of my fellow men and women, I got to join the military during the Vietnam War, and I myself served the additional 29 years then and thereafter. So the fact that you're recommending, recognizing our veterans is near and dear to my heart. I sincerely appreciate it. I've been to each and every one of your events every year. I look forward to being out at the Marriott on Saturday night, so it's going to be a full day with Veterans Day Parade in the morning and then veterans coming home that evening. So thank you very much for what you do for recognizing our veterans. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis.
Okay. And Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll, I'll wrap this up. I just want to say, I probably should have said that Victor is also the President and CEO of PBS Kansas here in Wichita. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. And I think there's still tickets that people can buy if they wanted to. I, I don't know what the cutoff is, but I know if you go to kpts.org under the Community tab, they can find a link to where they can buy tickets.
Correct.
And there, I believe there's, there's availability there. If someone hasn't been involved in this, you can meet lots of really great people in this community that really want to come together and show support. This is actually a fundraiser, so it's, the money is, is intentional. So it's not, not, they're not just trying to be difficult, but the seat, the sales of those tickets actually does help, help PBS and veterans. And so I also want to say, you know, there's a lot of other groups of veterans organizations that connect to this, and think about Commissioner Dennis just mentioned, the Veterans Day Parade. That's a huge celebration for this community. We also, you know, we have honor flights, and people who are involved in that are part of this, part of this event. And we have Vet to Vet Support Command, they're part of this event. We have Battle Buddies, which is part of, and all that goes. There's just so many groups that connect to veterans. And one thing I've heard, I think this is true, but Wichita and Sedgwick County, I think stands out in the country as being very, very loving to our veterans. We want to keep this up. So I think actually you guys have made a difference. I think it's helped us recognize, rightfully recognize our veterans and develop that love for them. I think it's making a big difference. So with that, I, I know I, I kind of asked you a question, but I didn't give you a chance to answer. So talk about the tickets or the deadline, if you want to do that, real quickly, and then I'll probably have one final comment.
May I invite Lynn Wolf to talk? She's in charge of that.
She's in charge.
Yes, thank you. We're so pleased to be here, and, and thank you very much for that proclamation. Yeah, they can go to kpts.org or call our office directly. We are trying to finalize our numbers as the event is coming up, so our number is 838-3090. So please give us a call, and thank you, everyone. We are so appreciative of our veterans, and we're looking forward to a great celebration.
Okay. And Commissioner Lopez.
Well, I just want to reiterate basically everything that everybody said. Just thank you so much for everything you do. I'm so excited about your new facility, being able to tour that, and I'm really excited to see how it all turns out when it's completed and the renovations are done. We will be at the opening. My son, who's eight, he is excited. I told him about it, so he's really excited to come see what it's all about as well. So I'm sure that that's just one of many, many children who are going to be really excited to be a part of this. So thank you again for everything you guys do. I can't wait to see what you do in the future.
Thank you too. We appreciate you. And I know we have another tour this afternoon with some officials from the county, so all of you are welcome to check it out. Because we do want to have that, if you don't have a room for your meetings yet, we have the studio, we have the space. Trust me, we do. Thank you all. Appreciate your support.
And was there a closing statement, Commissioner Howell?
I just wanted to, I guess, I want to say, just wrap this up. I just want to say, we love you all. Thank you for what you do for our community. And Victor, I am so glad to know you and appreciate, appreciate you specifically. I am blown away with your leadership, so just want to say thank you for all you do and for your attention to veterans. It means a great deal. And with that, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for all you do. Okay. Next item, please.
New business. Item A, Discussion of Donation Request from Humankind.
Morning, Brett.
Morning, Chairman Meitzner, members of the Board of County Commission. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. The item coming before you now is a request for funding from Humankind Ministries. It's a $125,000 non-recurring request. We understand that Humankind is also going to make this same request to the city of Wichita. That is coming up in a couple of weeks. If approved, the funds would be used to operate the emergency homeless shelter from November 1st, which is a couple of days ago, through March 30th of 2022. To give you a little bit of history, Sedgwick County, the city of Wichita, and United Way participated for a number of years, was providing some supplemental funding for the emergency homeless shelter. That funding was at a lower level than what we're looking at today. We've contributed around $12,000 per year from each of those three entities to support that, that emergency shelter. That public support ended around 2005, and at that time, a plan to end chronic homelessness was produced. Interfaith Ministries, the precursor organization to Humankind Ministries, indicated at that time that they would privately fundraise to support the winter overflow shelter. Now, to summarize, the need, Humankind is indicating that funding the emergency shelter at this point or receiving additional funding for that is a result of some expenses that have been deferred for a number of years. They indicate that rather than funding repairs, money was, been diverted to providing homeless services, or rather than upgrading building systems, that money was diverted to homeless services. Staffing deficiency in terms of the numbers of people and pay rates have been diverted to providing homeless services. So if approved, county funds would likely come from a transfer from BLCC contingency to the community programs budget and the general fund to accommodate this, this funding request. We have today joining us from Humankind Ministries Kathy Holderman, who's the Chair of the Board of Directors, Scott Eilert, who is the Vice Chair of the Board of Directors, and Latasha Saint-Harnault, who is the President and CEO of Humankind Ministries. I believe that Scott is going to speak to you in terms, more about the needs, and give you some more details about this funding request. So unless you have questions for me at this time, I'll relinquish the podium to Scott.
Morning, Scott.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Brett. My name is Dr. Scott Eilert. I'm a 26-year resident of Sedgwick County. I'm also a 26-year employee of Cargill. I work in our protein headquarters down on Douglas Street. As Brent suggested, I am here today on behalf of Humankind Ministries. I serve on the Board of Directors. I'm also serving as the Vice Chair now, or excuse me, yeah, as the Vice Chair of the Board. I'm proud to say that I've been volunteering with this organization and its, and the named predecessor organization, Interfaith Ministries, for much of the last 20 years. I've committed some of my own personal time and my own personal capital into this organization for many of those years. I'm also proud to say that my company, my employer, has also been a strong supporter of Humankind Ministries. This year alone, we'll provide about 50, over $50,000 in funding for the programs and the services that Humankind operates. We're here to talk about the emergency winter shelter. Last night, if you checked the thermometer, it dropped to 39 degrees. It's that time of year. It's that time of year when the people that I drive past that are hovering underneath the overpass on Gelog, we need to start thinking about providing that life-saving shelter for them, which is what an emergency winter shelter provides. And that's what we're here to speak about, is giving that life-saving shelter and having a community effort around providing that life-saving shelter. So we're here to respectfully request, on behalf of Humankind Ministries and the clients we serve, $125,000. That funding will be paired with funding that is to be provided by the city of Wichita to operate the $250,000 of cost that it takes to operate that shelter during that period of times that was mentioned. This request is consistent with Sedgwick County's mission of cultivating a healthy, safe, and welcoming community. Together, as that community, we can meet the needs of these individuals and provide that life-saving shelter to these 1,000 to 1,200 people that we typically serve during the cold winter months. The $250,000 can keep those two shelters open for that period of time, meeting all the needs for the resources that's required, as well as the supportive services and the case management services that we provide in order to take some of those individuals and start them on the transition to ultimately having a home, ultimately having an address. Your partnership with this community on this issue shows that you care about all of these neighbors, including those that don't today have a physical address. So let's give just a little bit more background about the emergency winter shelter. Humankind Ministries has been operating and working with these winter shelters since the 90s. We've partnered with churches, and oftentimes before, in the previous years, churches actually provided some of that shelter, and the city and county funding helped to augment some of their expenses. These, the shelter that we operate is a no-barrier shelter. Addicts, mentally ill, people with criminal records, there are no people left behind. We accept everyone. Some of the shelters that are operated during these period of times have restrictions. Some of the people that we service in this emergency winter shelter have no other place to go. Without such a shelter, they sometimes end up in jail. They sometimes end up in the emergency rooms. Roxanne Moran, who's been one of our employees for over 25 years, her and her staff, they get calls in the middle of the night from emergency rooms, from the jails, to provide that shelter because that's where people end up when they're seeking respite, when they're seeking shelter from the cold. You know, this shelter, it's not just a bed, right? During these extreme cold times, this is, this is a life or death matter, and I know that you all can respect that. Now, over the years, we know that you all can respect that. Now, over the years, we've typically operated in this November 1st to March 31st timeframe that was discussed. During the periods of extreme cold, like the brutal time that we had last February, we'll keep that shelter open 24/7. So typically, it's just an overnight shelter. But when we were faced with sub-zero temperatures, even during the day, we kept the shelter open because it just didn't seem right to turn people out onto the street in such cold conditions. These services have never been more important. I think you all can respect that. In light of what's taken place with the pandemic and the lasting and lingering effects of this, I think we've all recognized the importance of looking after those less fortunate in the community. Now, if you think about that history, you might be asking the question, why now? If we've been operating these shelter for the last 10 years, because as was stated previously, there was funding provided from the community and that funding went away several years ago. And Humankind Ministries has been operating this, investing over the last 10 years, over a million dollars to provide for these services. So why are we before you today asking for this money? And it was mentioned previously that we make choices in an organization like ours. We have to choose between the urgent and the important, right? The urgent is providing life-saving shelter for people that have no place else to go. That's what an emergency winter shelter does. The important is fixing the heating and air conditioning units in some 155 apartments that we operate for low-income housing. Important is fully staffing ourselves so we can provide that case management and move people from the street to an address and then a job. That's the important. That's what we're faced with as an organization. Do we focus on the urgent, keeping people alive? Or do we focus on the important, the long-term needs of transitioning more people out of homelessness? In addition to the, to the things that were mentioned on deferred maintenance, we've got several open positions that we need to fill. We continue to operate those 155 apartments that are providing low-income housing. We're going to conduct, we're just kicking off Operation Holiday, which is the largest holiday assistance program in the region. Our services are extensive. What we're really trying to ask you today is help us, help us help these individuals by partnering with us to meet the basic life-saving needs so that we can take some of that capital, some of those, some of our current resources, and focus on the important transition of moving people out of homelessness into a home. Now, you're all familiar, we opened up the studios this year, the Studios by Humankind on North Pica. Call went out last fall to provide this intermediate housing solution. We answered the call. We raised our hand and said, yes, we're going to do this. I was on the board when we made that decision. We raised our hand in a time, in a period of COVID, great uncertainty, we said, you know what, this is the right thing to do. Let's invest here. That's another one of those important measures that we're trying to keep our resources focused on. That's why we're here, asking for the community's support to help us take care of that, help us support that emergency winter shelter. And we'll continue to focus our resources on that transition out of homelessness. We're asking for your partnership. You've heard me say that term a lot, and I truly do believe this is a partnership. But the reality is this, we can't do this alone. We've been doing this alone with donors, with donations and so forth, but it's, it's tough right now. We need your help to service this basic need in the community for this emergency winter shelter so that we can start to focus on the longer-term needs of this community about finding an end and truly breaking that cycle of homelessness. We have big dreams in this organization. We're starting work on a capital campaign that will allow us to expand and improve our homelessness efforts and our efforts to help the less fortunate. We really appreciate your time this morning. We really know that this commission cares about the basic needs of these individuals, these women and men who don't have any other place to go. These women and men who are going to stare into that brutal north wind that's coming down Market Street during sub-zero wind chills. We know you care about them. What we're asking for is a partnership. The model that existed about 10 years ago, where it was a real community effort to take care of this, that was the right thing to do. For reasons that we won't debate at this time, that, that model went away and the burden shifted to Humankind Ministries. You know, I heard a statement, Commissioner Howell, you, you made a statement that let's do the right thing. And so my answer to you is, why would we do this now? My answer is this, it's never too late to start doing the right thing. So I thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Scott, for being here today. I have just one quick question about the number of individuals that come to this shelter each night. How many, how many lives are we talking about here?
We're talking about anywhere from 70 to 130. On a nice, warm night, it might be closer to around 70. On the really cold nights, it's going to be closer to 100. We, our maximum that we've seen is 130.
Okay. And are there any other emergency shelters that service this population of people, these 70 to 130 people in Sedgwick County?
The, the fact that this is a no-barrier shelter, I mean, I, I can't speak for each and every individual, right, if they would be eligible for something else. But the reality, to our knowledge, is that any other shelters that are there have restrictions, right? About whether it be about their condition that they're in or their legal record, this is a no-barrier shelter. So I think this is a unique facility in the population that it serves.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? I don't see any at this time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate. And thank you for Cargill remaining in the Wichita area.
Don't mention it.
I know. That was a lot of work. So thank you. Brent?
Latasha wants to say something.
I don't. Okay. Commissioner Cruz says that Latasha wants to say something?
She has her hand up. She's like...
I apologize. I just want to, Dr. Eilert was, sorry, Dr. Eilert was correct. It's 70 to 130 men on the men's side, but I just wanted to clarify that we see anywhere from 30 to 50 women on the women's side. So collectively, we're seeing closer to 200 individual men and women on any given night through those five months. And then just also clarification, we never turn anyone away. So, thank you.
Okay. Brent, any, any other sense? Does anybody else from the public want to address us on this item? And I don't see any, so we'll bring this back to the bench. Is there some questions for Brent at this point? I'll start with one. This has been, I think we've all had meetings with, with people representing Humankind, so I'll reveal that. But I want to say that I am supportive and hugely respectful for, for the mission of, of Humankind. I struggle, as I've said in my meetings, I struggle with making sure that this is a fair and open and a transparent environment for any nonprofit or for-profit service that, that would want to step up and do winter overflow shelter, even especially no barrier. So I, I was going to ask, the request is 125,000. My, my thought to try to be transparent to the public and allow others is that, could we consider moving, I know Lindsay's here, she's been out, but could we consider adding, putting a, an RFP, I'm going to take a number, 200,000 in an RFP out of some venue of the general fund, put it in a emergency, a fast-track RFP. Is that, is that, A, is it possible to put 200,000 in an RFP to allow any provider to meet these very limited and strict criteria? No barrier, emergency shelter from November to March 31st. A, do we have, is that possible to 200,000? And B, is it possible to do a very fast request for proposals and, and have our review board bring us back a decision in what timeframe?
Chairman Meisner, I guess to answer it in two parts, yes, it would be possible, the same funding source that we identified for the 125,000 BLCC contingency would likely be where we would look to provide money to support that request for proposal. I will tell you that typically a request for proposal process runs six to eight weeks, depending on the complexity of what we're, we're doing. Given a narrower scope, the fact that the providers or the vendors, if you will, for this type of service are known to us, I would think that we could turn that around, building in the time for the meetings and bid board and so forth in the 30-day window.
That's getting a, a notice out, getting responses back in 15 days, whatever, and then making it, just having a meeting with the bid board for a week and bring...
And then bringing it back, yes.
Because even, you know, Dr. Scott, you, you, we can't really confirm that, that this is the only provider of this. Everybody, people think we are, that you are the only provider of this, but I don't know that for sure. And so I, I don't want to receive phone calls from others saying, hey, we could have done some of this too. And that's why I just think it's good for the public to be aware that we care about this. It is an emergency support service. And that's why I actually wanted to add some more money to that additional 125 and maybe, and maybe Humankind asked for the whole 200, I don't know, but to sit, to allow that. So, you know.
Commissioner, we, we appreciate your, the attempt for transparency and fairness, not attempt, we appreciate your commitment to transparency and fairness.
Right.
The, the challenge we have is time, right?
Sure.
We're, we're going to make some hard decisions as a board. We're going to make some hard decisions as to how long we can keep this open. And these are painful decisions. Painful. So we're, we're here asking for time. The other thing that we would tell you is that if there was another organization in this community, of which we don't know that there is, or we have not seen one that stepped up to be able to do this, there's great organizations in this city. We partner with a lot of them. But if there's another organization that comes to you with a proposal that meets all the requirements and does so in a manner that's as good or better than the services that staff at Humankind will provide, we'll pass that torch.
I, I get that. I, that's why I just want to, personally, I want to be assured of that. I, I, I just want to, I hope that in a way we, if the commission would agree, we put this out. And if you're the only one that responds, it's an easy, easy decision. And actually, even if it's, you only need the 125 or, and somebody else only needs whatever for a coat drive or whatever, emergency winter, protect, everything that you said. That, but I have, that, that's just me with a question because we hadn't had any questions for Brent yet on this topic.
Okay.
So thank you for, for clarifying.
All right. Excuse me.
So Commissioners, Commissioner Cruz?
So in, just to follow up to his question, because we have 200 people that could be impacted, tonight's low is 38, tomorrow is 39. It's wet. Most of these people who are on the streets right now have very little on their backs to keep them warm. People walk by my house all the time, just walking and wandering all night long because they have nowhere to go. They have nowhere to sleep. So if we were going to consider this, knowing that it will take 30 days, what would be the 30-day ask to get us through until, I mean, because we know who the providers are in, here in town. I mean, we know Union Rescue Mission, we know Salvation Army, we know who does this. I mean, we're a small community. We know who provides these services. And so I, I understand the need for full transparency, 100% get that, completely respect that. But the reality is that we have 200 people on the streets tonight at 38 degrees. So that's, that's really where we're at. I mean, if we don't do anything for 30 days, we're going to have 200 people and it's only going to get colder.
Right.
So if, if you had to break it down per month...
It's a, and I'll defer to Latasha, it's 25,000, no, 250, it's 50,000 a month, right?
Yeah, it's, it's approximately 40 to 50,000 a month.
Yeah. And, and so that's, to answer that question directly, that's what, I mean, it's just, just five months, 250,000. That's, that's all in cost. If we know that, and from a Board of Directors, and what I want to commit to you is that we, we trust you. And if you, if this commission determines that, yes, we're going to execute an RFP, the money's there, we're going to execute an RFP. And if someone comes forward with a great plan, that they can turn on a dime and get people in beds in that period of time, then as we said, we'll, we'll pass that torch. We are, we are prepared, at this point, we are prepared to open on November 8th with some degree of assurance that, you know what, there's either going to be money there, you know, in, in, in the form of a, of this type of funding, or there's going to be somebody else that's got the room for those 200 people starting December 1st.
Okay. From an operational standpoint, regardless of who's funding this, are there rules and regulations that you have to abide by?
I'm going to turn that one to...
Emergency shelter? I mean, that someone would have to, if they don't already have those things in place?
Correct. So you have to have a facility that can, you know, shelter that many. And honestly, due to the pandemic, we've had to use other facilities that we have. So men's shelter, we had to de-conjugate to approximately 60 to 70 and use a secondary facility. Women, we were able to spread out in the three feet recommendation for shelter providers across the country. And so there are things that we've had to do as a shelter provider, given COVID, which has made it much more difficult to run shelters, especially of this nature. What I would say as well is, given the type of clientele, when we say no barrier, we can tell you that approximately 70% of those coming into this facility are either under substance abuse use or have significant substance abuse disorders. Cobbled with about 70% have mental and behavioral health disorders, and oftentimes, they have both. Lots of folks that have been experiencing trauma of different kinds, we, we serve those that have criminal backgrounds, including sex offenders. So really, when you're saying most difficult to serve and that these clients cannot access shelter at other locations, and for good reason, I mean, half the time. You also have to look at the time. So we do second and third shift, and it takes many staffers to pull all of this off. You have to have the mats and the beds, you have to have your HMIS systems, security. So there is quite a bit that goes into the operation of this. We're a really good community partner with the COC, which is the United Way, which means we turn in all of our data for even emergency shelter, which if anybody knows anything about homeless services, is incredibly difficult and time-consuming. And we still have a commitment to that. So whether it's Humankind Ministries or someone else, as Scott's already mentioned, that's great. But I would implore that provider to also share their data because it negatively impacts the community on a federal level if we don't have that information entered because of the volume of people that we see in this five months. So as you can see, that's just a few items. I could go much deeper than that, but that's just a few. So our staff right now, we've already hired seasonal staff for this and are on standby and are looking for direction from our Board of Directors in this body to see what that looks like.
You know, I, I might just offer, and again, I'm, I'm not about to tell you, this commission, how to do their jobs. I've never had your job and I won't be able to do your job. It's a hard job. However, given the timeframe, one thing that I thought about as I was preparing for this is realizing that there might be a desire to open this up. is realizing that there might be a desire to open this up for RFP. Maybe there's a commitment that, you know what, in subsequent years, this will be an RFP. But given the time that we have right now, maybe the most prudent thing is that we grant the funding with a commitment that in future years, this would go out to RFP. Just a suggestion.
Oh, right. I didn't add that, but I'm very comfortable in our budget process, getting a number and maybe work with the city to get a number that would be an annual emergency, just like we do in, and then that way, obviously, if this would have come in front of us at a meeting like this six weeks ago, we'd had this done.
Right.
And so the budget process, I think, you know, everybody brings their ideas, but it's, it's clearly something that, that I'm willing during our budget process in the, in the spring of next year, to add that in there.
Thank you.
As a consideration.
Okay.
So, because Brent, can I ask a quick question, and then Mr. Howe's got a question, or Commissioner Howe? Where would this, if 200 is the magic number, 125, whatever it is, where would this come from, out of the general, general budget, so to speak? Where would we take that money from, assign it from? And your thought, since I'm catching you?
There would be, well, it's whether we would pull it from what we've set aside for reserves, whether we've been doing offset with another program. I think it would reside in community programs, and then it would be part of the line item in that, that budget authority going forward.
Okay. Okay. But it, you're confident that it could be done, and Lindsey's nodding in approval that it could be done?
Yes.
So, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of comments and questions, but since Brent's still at the podium, let me start with you. Do we know if Wichita is contemplating this, would they be using pass-through funds from state or federal, or would they be using property tax dollars?
It's my understanding that their funding source comes from a grant. I don't know for sure if that's a federal or state grant.
Okay. I'd like to find out more about that.
I can answer your question, Commissioner.
Go right to the question.
I'm sorry. I, so from my understanding, the verbal commitment from the City of Wichita at this time is ESG funding for 125, and they're in the process of actually writing that funding commitment, and we've provided all the information. And so we've been in touch with Sally Stang, and Mark, and a few others over at the City of Wichita, and that's my understanding. I could be wrong, but.
So to be clear, ESG is the Emergency Shelter Grant. That's a, I believe, a federal grant, and that is earmarked specifically for this type of use. They can't use it to build a bridge, or fix a road, or pay a police department, and they have to be used for this type of use. Is that correct?
I would defer to the Department of Housing for that.
Okay. So again, I guess I would just say this, they have, they have some dollars at their discretion that's going to go to this type of use somehow, some way in this community, and I don't know that this is the same question that we're contemplating today. And Dr., thank you for being here today. I do want to, number one, say thank, thank all of you that care deeply about this, and you're personally involved, and I think it's great to see people in the community lead on these issues. I have some other questions, though. My first question would be this, would a single mother with dependents, with children, would they be welcomed into your shelter, even with, even with the children, if they, if they do not have any domestic violence component to what they've, with their experiences?
So the, we do have a shelter that's designed for men, women, and families, and we're not asking for funding and support for that, that we operate year-round, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And again, we really accept anyone in that facility. That's a separate program than what we're discussing today. So we do accept mothers with kids and families. The reason, what we're discussing today, though, is emergency winter shelter is specifically designed for clients that typically cannot access other providers. And given that we do accept sex offenders and folks that would not be appropriate for a family setting, we do not accept families in this building. Most families in Sedgwick County, I can assure you, there are enough shelter beds that if a mom with a child wants to access shelter, that they would be able to get in somewhere.
So you mentioned the word this building. Where is this building?
So it's located near the Lord's Diner on East Central.
And the configuration, the configuration in that building, what type of accommodations are made for each of the people that are receiving help?
Yeah, so that's called the inn, and it's very much like if you've been in a college dorm, it's a very much a dorm-style setting.
Private rooms?
Private rooms, with multiple beds. So if we're looking at single men rooms, then there'll be multiple men in that room that might not be family. But if we have families, then they have single rooms that are to themselves. Yes, correct.
All right. Thank you for those answers. So curiously, today we're being asked for a one-time consideration, but it sounds like there's also an expectation for future consideration next year and ongoing. So let's clarify, are you asking for one time today, or are you asking for a consideration for today and for the future?
You know, I think we would, the direct request is one time today. What, what we would also like to engage, though, is, as Commissioner Meister spoke of, what is that ongoing, you know, is it possible for us to think about this? Need will be here next year, right? I mean, we all know that. So the direct request, Commissioner, is today, right? We're not making a request, a multi-year request. It was characterized as a single, one-time request, and that's what it is. But we would like to consider, so I guess, and direct to answer your question, we're asking for both in some respects. Direct cash request today with a consideration for how this could be potentially budgeted for in subsequent years.
Have you received ESG funds from Wichita in the past?
ESG funds from Wichita?
We, we have received ESG funds from the City of Wichita in the past. Most ESG that comes to Humankind Ministries, and I will point out that in terms of our overall operating budget, the amount of money that we get from government, whether it's local, state, or federal, is fairly small. Approximately 250,000 in HUD dollars, and then some ESG and some other things, but it's, I mean, relative to our budget, it's fairly small. Compared to other agencies in other cities similar in size that do this kind of work. So yes, but that ESG has, has typically been designated to that other building I was mentioning, Commissioner. So the inn, that's year-round, the kind of 24-hour facility, that has been earmarked in the past to that building. So we have received funding, but it's not necessarily been at the heart of this, this life-saving health and human service resource for overflow for Sedgwick County.
I guess I would like to find out from someone, and this is, I don't expect you guys to answer this question right now, but it would be interesting for us, as we deliberate and discuss this, to understand the magnitude of the ESG grant, and how much of that is earmarked, and how much of that is discretionary, and how much is perhaps not earmarked, that may be still to be determined by Wichita, you know, understand, if you will, what they're contemplating across the street. Because again, if, if you need 250, and all of that came from Wichita, that would still be a solution to you. I don't know if they even have that option. But whether or not this comes from Sedgwick County or Wichita, it doesn't really matter to you, the source, so much. It does matter to taxpayers a little bit. So I guess I'd like to, I wish I knew, I wish I knew more about what they are contemplating, what's on the table across the street. I just don't know. And in fact, I would like to almost, car me says, I would love to see them discuss this as a council and deliberate this, and get through their decision process before we are even doing the same thing, because I think their discussion really has a bearing on what we do over here.
We, we respect that. The challenge we're faced with, we've got to be perfectly frank, is we've got two government agencies that are looking at each other across the street, and one of them seems like they're waiting for the other to make the first move. And I'm, I'm being candid, but that's part of our frustration. And so, but I, I, your, your questions are very fair.
Well, I'll just say this, you know, cities across this country typically, you know, they have, they have programs that deal with these types of issues, and this is typically a city, you know, issue, not so much county issue. So we're, we're doing something a little bit different that we've, you know, maybe, you know, a long time ago, we did have some small amount of funding, but not for quite a long time now. So the reality is, this is a bit of a change for us. And again, what I'm concerned about is, we've not really looked at the budget closely to find out if this is something we want to, you know, commit to going forward. I would like to have some ability to, you know, possibly do something this year, but possibly not do it next year without receiving huge amounts of criticism, because I just don't know how this fits our budget. I don't know that this is a, really, as much as a county issue as it is a city issue. No offense to anybody in that discussion, but, but cities typically do deal with this, and counties and cities don't always do the same things.
No, we, we understand that, and, and we respect that, you know, you're, you're overseeing an entire county, not just one city. We got that. My children go to school, they went to high school out in Goddard. I've been down Goddard streets four o'clock in the morning, and I've been in Goddard streets at midnight. I don't see homeless people in Goddard. And I don't say that facetiously, I just say that just to point out the obvious, that in a homeless, in a, in a region like this, the homeless tend to congregate. The homeless from the county tend to congregate in the city center. And so we, we respect that this is a Wichita entity, a Wichita zip code, but we still believe this is a county issue.
To be fair, mainly my colleagues did receive briefings from Humankind, and I'm not, I'm not disappointed how this worked out necessarily. I, I think we all have opportunities that are different than each other, that's fine. I did get a briefing from Salvation Army, I think, a dare to ago. I also received a briefing from Union Rescue Mission a couple of months ago, and they're all trying to solve the same types of issues. In fact, they use the same terminology. They talk about how many of their clients have substance abuse issues, and mental health issues, and criminal histories, and struggling with, you know, job, you know, job placements and job opportunities. The common, these are very common sentences that are, that revolve into this discussion. What is obvious to me a little bit is that we talk about, I just mentioned Salvation Army and Union Rescue Mission, I didn't mention Open Door yet, but they're also doing some of that. I know United Way has been a leader in the community in the past. And, and I'm, I'm sure there's probably others that are maybe less known, but that's at least a few. And my question is, we have, we talk about Mental Health Coalition. All these organizations that are trying to provide mental health services come together, and let's, let's work together, let's recognize each other, let's, let's connect and provide services as a, as a coordinated effort rather than a disconnected effort. And what I'm going to ask you now is, are you reaching out to the, to the other organizations? Is there a coalition, or is there a willingness to work together? And how, how do, how do I know that? What's, what's been going on? Because it seems to me like these are separate, and, and they're separate efforts, so to speak. So please comment.
You know, there is, I'll, I'll speak a little bit, and I know Natasha has some comments as well. There is a, there is a sincere desire by our board to not duplicate efforts. And I'll, I'll speak just a little bit on an official position on behalf of Cargill, but I think I can speak safely to this. We would, we would prefer, we, we serve a lot of agencies, right? This is my Cargill hat on right now. And we would prefer that there not be a great degree of duplication of services. We would prefer, if we're going to provide money, that has a coordination of services. And so we're willing and able, we, we partner with a lot of agencies. We respect, the, the time that was spent, to the respect of our veterans this morning, was admirable, and we appreciate that. We partner with the VA. We, Hunter Health Clinic is out at our studios this morning giving vaccines and flu shots, right? So our willingness to partner, both in the near term and in the long term, is something that we want to do. It's hard, right? It's hard when you have entities that, that believe that, that their, their model is the model, right? But if you're asking us, do we have a willingness to think about coordination of efforts? Absolutely. The plans that we're talking about, this capital campaign that is currently in a feasibility study, I mean, it includes partnering with other social service agencies. And it might mean, and as an example, the last meeting I was in, we talked about the fact that, you know what, in our, in the shelter that we may have in our capital campaign, in our future plans, it might have a food pantry that's operated by somebody other than Humankind Ministries. That's okay, right? So we are willing to do that. It's very hard, Commissioner. We, that's, and I'll let Natasha speak to that, because she's in those conversations directly.
And I would just add, so Humankind Ministries, we do sit on a number of committees, acting committees and coalitions, including the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition. I can safely say, in the last four years, our staff has spent thousands of man-hours, and that's probably no exaggeration, in the effort to collaborate with other providers. And I also just say that I have a deep admiration for my colleagues in the field at other agencies. As I mentioned already, we're a member of the COC. We are committed to those long meetings and long processes, and talking about by-name list, and we really focus on the client, meeting where their client, where they're at, and whatever provider is best for them. What I will say, the agencies that you mentioned, we are in regular communications with, quite often our case managers are talking to their case managers, and I can still tell you the need is great. And each one of us does something really unique, and the sub-populations within the homeless community vary, and their needs vary. And so I can safely say that we're all doing very, very good work, and the attempt to work together is there. And I think that we have made incredible progress with some of these committees and subcommittees and coalitions, and I think the future looks brighter than ever. So to answer your questions, are we looking to collaborate and have really meaningful, thoughtful conversations every single day?
I mean, I hate to keep asking more questions, but I feel like these are important questions. I'm sorry.
Please.
So, you know, it's, there's a lot of organizations coming to government for help. And I just recognize, there are thousands of great charity organizations in the community trying to do great things, and they are all trying to solve problems, and I think we need them all, and I'm glad that they're doing those things. We, as a community, we depend on charity organizations to help people many, many times. We have not given you Humankind money in the recent past, and so I would like to reflect on, you know, you did provide a shelter last year, you said it was very, very cold, I remember that. How did you get through that? Government didn't provide, we didn't provide money last year, so how did you get through that last year?
Well, we, we covered the cost, but we made choices. And the 40 central air units in our apartments didn't get fixed, and staff positions didn't get filled. And, and I've been on this board, I was on this board in early 2000s, I took a hiatus, I can rejoin the board in the last couple of years. And it was deja vu all over again. Where is the money going to come from? Because we can, this is one of the hardest things for us to predict the cost for, it's one of the hardest things for us to raise money for. And as I look at it, and I respect your question, as I look at it, what's the distinguishing factor? If you think about all the things that Humankind focuses on, what's the distinguishing factor of this versus that inn versus Operation Holiday? And here's the distinguishing factor. We fundamentally believe this is, this is a basic life-saving need, right? This is a little bit like providing the sheriff's patrols and the great patrols that we have, right? This is basic life-saving needs. A lot of the other stuff that we do is really towards that transition out of homelessness. So, you know, it, I, I get the concern, I know that you have a lot of other requests, but when it comes down to an emergency winter shelter to keep people from, from suffering in the cold, we, we think the distinction of that versus a lot of the other requests is simply that this is basic life-saving needs.
Let me ask you a question. There are some people out there that are struggling on their own finances.
Yeah.
And, and there's people out there that have some discretionary dollars at their, at their fingertips they can do things with. And so the private sector obviously would want, I think, to be involved in this, to the extent that they can make that personal choice to do that. So I, I know you guys, Humankind fundraises, and they, they accept private donations. Is there any, any increased effort to seek private help?
You know, our development efforts, we've, we've been proud of our development efforts. The staff has done a fantastic job. And so our development efforts, we continue to, you know, we're, you know, a lot of our development efforts are very focused on unrestricted funds, right? So we, we have an event, we, we sponsor something, and, and those funds could be dispersed whenever. So we don't, we try not to, we don't have a lot of restricted calls, right? And so we really try to fundraise for the whole mix and then meet all these basic needs. Have we done a call specifically for the emergency winter shelters? We can, and we do, but look, it's what we just continue to be faced from a pure budgetary standpoint, is we got a choices to make. And if we can't get help here, then we may have to scale this back, and then, or if we keep it open, we're going to, we're going to defer some of these most pressing needs that we have in other parts of the organization.
Let me just wrap this up. I'll just say that, you know, I, we have, at least I have been approached by these other organizations asking for similar help, and so I don't know what to do. I think the RFP actually is probably not a bad way to move forward. I think that makes some sense. I'm a little concerned about any, any underlying expectation, if we were to do this, that this is the place to get money, on every year. I think there's a concern about that. This needs to fit our budget process, and I know that we have way more requests for money and for spending than we can possibly fund. In fact, a lot of the spending that we don't provide is to internal county needs. We have enormous county needs that we're not funding, because we just don't have the money. So that's, that is a concern. I think we need to. I think we need to go look at the budget process and seriously put everything on the same table. But, and I would say the same thing to any organization that looks to us for regular support. I think we need to be very careful not to do that in a way that sets us up for failure in the future. My final comment would be this, and you don't even need to comment necessarily, but if we are going to consider this, I think this might be to our RFP process. Whoever provides, if you will, RFP proposals, I think they need to provide a number of years of 990 forms, so we understand the magnitude of their financial operation, their salaries and things like that. 990s are part of this discussion, so please provide those as well. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just had a couple of things just to add really quickly. I just want to point out, which has already been noted, but we are a health and human service agency. We do not have any fee for service that we're able to collect on. We, and Dr. Idler has already mentioned this, but as you can imagine, this is not a glamorous mission. And most people are so far from it, far removed from it, East Wichita, West Wichita, it's really hard to understand it and educate about these issues at hand. And so, we work tirelessly, our staff is amazing, and people are very generous in the community, and we would not be able to do this work, and I want to emphasize that, without philanthropy and people that really dig in, our board members, volunteers and others alike. And so, that's wonderful. But I will say this, if you look at the research and you look at any other community similar in size to Sedgwick County and the city of Wichita, what makes their homeless programs successful and scale is that in part, in partnership with the business community and community members, in part, local government is involved in these issues. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent, is there any way that we can use ARPA funding for this?
At this time, I would caution against that for a couple of reasons. One is that, and this is an administrative thing, it's not on the timeline that we've established for setting up those community ARPA requests or ARPA funding priorities. But the second thing, I think, is a little more fundamental, and that is that within the ARPA allocations, there is some, there is some discretion to use money toward homelessness, but it needs to be homelessness that was caused by the pandemic. So as I understand this, it's more chronic homelessness. The folks that are being served here probably didn't become homeless as a result of COVID. As we've looked at national statistics, the incremental change in homelessness during the pandemic was 2% to 3%. So it's making the COVID connection so that the ARPA funding is eligible is going to be tough, I think, for this specific request.
Okay. Well, thanks for that answer. Along with that same line of thought, we keep referring a number of folks back to the federal government and other agencies because there are other buckets out there. We keep hearing about these other buckets. Are there other buckets someplace that they could go to for funding?
There are some buckets that are focused on housing, but I don't think that the parameters for those programs have been established, unless I haven't, I have not seen them. So I think the timing of being able to access that money would not fit in with the timeline that the folks from Humankind are suggesting.
Okay. Let me go back to Humankind. They tout no barrier, and I understand that. And that's great, because if someone has mental health issues or drug abuse problems and so forth, they still need housing. But out of the 200 people that you can house in any given night, how many of those need no barrier and how many are just homeless and don't need no barrier?
I would say the vast majority seeking shelter in these types of facilities need no barrier or very low barrier. If you're a homeless individual and you can access other shelters in town, you are probably not coming to the winter shelter.
Okay, well, that goes along with the question that Commissioner Meitzner brought up on an RFP. At this point, I don't know that I would support it. If we limit the RFP to specific requirements that they have to meet, that only one agency can meet, and we have Salvation Army, Open Door, the Union Rescue Mission, we've got a number of people that can provide housing for the homeless. So it's just like if I told our purchasing department that I only want to buy Peterbilt dump trucks, that wouldn't be legal, I don't believe. We can't write an RFP that gets so specific that we guarantee that it only goes to one agency. So that's why I kind of would worry about putting out an RFP on this.
Yeah, I understand, Commissioner. What I would stress, though, is if the RFP does not include no barrier, low barrier in the requirements, then it defeats necessarily the, I mean, it defeats the purpose of a overflow, like, winter life-saving service to those that cannot access other facilities. So, and I want to really emphasize that our partners, Open Door, they're amazing. They're serving the same clientele. The only thing that's different about Open Door is they are not an overnight facility. They don't operate an overnight shelter, they're a day center. So we couldn't do our work without them, and they couldn't do their work without us. So you can see how it's kind of a puzzle.
But that's not to say that if we put out an RFP, that they might not want to provide those services.
Absolutely. I understand.
So, again, I can't limit an RFP to say that only Humankind can qualify if we did that.
I don't think anyone's suggesting that, but I might be misunderstanding.
You know, I'll borrow your truck analogy, right? The Kenworth dealer can't fill out a Freightliner-only RFP, right? Could Union Rescue Mission or Salvation Army, could they operate a low income or a low barrier, a zero barrier shelter? They could, right? They just don't, right? The truck analogy, as a Kenworth dealer, I can't offer Peterbills, right? In a social service agency, if you wanted to, you could. You could do these things. You got to have the infrastructure, you got to have it set up. So I think that the point is, that I'm trying to make is, we're not saying that people, you should, if others want to offer this, I made this comment earlier and I'll reiterate it, if others want to offer the same service, it's a critical service. That's what, that's the point Latasha's making. This is a critical service, it's a critical gap that's got to be filled. It just so happens that there's one agency right now that's filling it. If somebody else wants to step up and say, yes, we will do that, again, pass the torch.
Well, there are about 2,000 nonprofits here in Sedgwick County, and we can't pick and choose winners and losers on this. All of them are providing absolute great service to our community. You're asking for us to provide, decide on a winner or a loser in this case, and we just heard from Heart Springs earlier this morning about their needs. And we could hear from Guadalupe Clinic on their needs, we could hear from Lord's Diner on their needs, we could hear from 2,000 different nonprofits on their needs. And I'm not saying that not one of those is not a very important need to our community. And as we move forward with any kind of a decision like this, it really should be as part of our budget cycle, and I talked to Latasha about this on Monday, that we start our budget cycle in February every year and we adopt a budget in August. This didn't come up during our entire budget cycle that I can recall. That was a discussion with the commission anyway. We're in November, in our calendar year of our fiscal year for Sedgwick County. We're at the very end. This has been a tough year, not only for you, but for the county, because as we talk about the costs going up, costs have gone up for the county, just as they've gone up for everyone else. And we're talking about using general fund, and the city of Wichita is not talking about using general fund. That comes out of the taxpayers' pockets that they pay in to us for their property taxes. And those are funds that I hold very near and dear, and I make sure that I, as I make decisions, that we're great stewards of that property tax funding. So at this time, I don't have a problem with you entering into our budget cycle in February and putting something in. I understand that that's after your need expires. But if you're going to ask me to put general fund money in November into a project where the city of Wichita, it's really a city of Wichita that has a homeless problem, I've got about 10 cities in my district alone that don't have a homeless problem, and I'll be first to admit that some of those people are right here in Wichita that came from those cities.
Thank you.
So I won't deny that.
All right.
But they are here in Wichita, they're not in Bentley, and they're not in Colwich and Dale and Viola. They're here in Wichita. And I would hope that Wichita would step up. We just had an en banc here a few weeks ago, and we just approved the minutes of the en banc today. And I did not hear Wichita stand up and say, we're going to help out in this. Latasha spoke at that. Wichita may stand up. If they do, I hope they do. I truly believe that it's their number-one issue, and it's not my number-one issue. Behavioral health is. Trying to work through this, but that has a number of components, drug and alcohol abuse, mental health issues. Homelessness is one of those, and granted, a number of those people have more than one of those issues. But to bring it to us before you bring it to the city of Wichita, and then they use other funding that we don't have access to, it's truly not something that I can support at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for coming, you guys, I really appreciate. And just for everything that you guys have continued to do for our community and the support that you guys offer. But I do wonder, how many people that you serve in this facility, do we also serve within comm care or at our jails? I mean, because I think you hit it on the nail on the head earlier, right? Like, we kind of have similar missions in who we serve and what we're trying to accomplish. We did get an email earlier this week, and I apologize, I wasn't able to find it, but it went over other organizations in our community that do similar, offer similar services, but none of them had no barrier, and none of them could hold the amount that you guys are seeing on a daily basis. If we did put this out to an RFP and say, Open Door wanted to do an overnight facility, how long would that realistically take to set up and start? And do we have enough time before this winter season is really hitting? I mean, as you said, it was 39 overnight last night, it's going to be, I think, a little colder tonight. Is that feasible?
Well, I don't want to speak for Open Door, certainly, you know, I do not want to do that, because those are my colleagues. But I can tell you, our teams, it takes approximately 90 days, and that's if we do it really fast. You have to hire, which right now is proving incredibly difficult, case managers, shelter supervisors, you know, third shift people willing to work with this population. Pay rates, as everyone's talked about, aren't great in social services and nonprofits. And so, it typically takes us, I would say, realistically 120 days to 90 days, really fast. If we find the people, we get the schedules, we have to prep all the buildings, there's a lot of prep to that, supplies, ordering supplies. Just, it's a lot of prep. I mean, so I don't want to speak to what an other agency, how long it would take them to do it, but that's our process.
Okay.
We start in the summer approximately.
Okay. You know, when you talk about putting an RFP out and not including the no barrier piece, I do think that that's setting our community up for failure, because as you mentioned, there's a lot of people that you're serving daily who wouldn't be able to go anywhere else. And so, I do worry if we don't include that and we go down an RFP route, that we're just setting, we're setting people up to not have what they need to survive at night in the winter. And I just, I don't think that that's okay. Yes, this has typically been a city-led initiative more than the county, but I do think it's important that we realize that this is not just a city problem, and we have to do everything we can to come together and fix some of these things, or at least attempt to do everything we can to help this population. We've all said that behavioral health is pretty much our top priority right now. This is a huge part of behavioral health issues. I mean, people don't just live on the streets because that's where they're comfortable. I mean, there's usually a lot that leads up to those things and makes that a reality for so many people. And then, of course, COVID has just come in and made this problem even worse. I do think it's really important, though, to mention that even NACO, which is the National Association of Counties, put out a report that's called Addressing Housing to Improve Health Outcomes. And it's really tied into recognizing housing and, just recognizing housing as a top social determinant of health. And as the organization that has our public health department, who serves the same people you're serving, I think this is completely tied into our mission. And I can share that study or that report with everybody who wants to see it. But, you know, counties have about 2,000 local health departments in the country, and it's really important that now that they are taking a stance on housing being such a big part of those determinants of health for public health. So I do think it's important that we, as Sedgwick County, realize the importance that this makes for health outcomes and that we serve the same people here, and we really need to figure out the best way to come together with the city and have these partnerships, like you called it, and really address this problem. And at the root cause is behavioral health, which is really where we're trying to have the biggest impact. And hopefully, if we can, then you won't have to serve so many people at night. But that's just the reality of where we are. And, I mean, we're here now, so we have to figure out what we can do to make sure that people aren't, you know, freezing at night. So thank you again for being here, I really appreciate both of you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of follow-up questions. The funding that you're requesting today, is this specifically for these, this one facility?
So, it's actually two facilities. One is for men and one is for women, and then a third location on our campus to try to de-conjugate. So we actually can use multiple locations, we have lots of facilities. So what we do is prep those spaces. The main facility is the men's emergency shelter, and it's located right next to our admin building, and that's where we serve a primary, the bulk of the overnight guests that come to us.
And all three of those buildings, do they use that same configuration of private spaces, if you will, for each of the clients?
So for emergency winter shelter, it is not private rooms. This is ran, this program in particular is ran a little bit differently. They are in a shared space, but they are separated to our best of our ability.
Someone emailed me, I just hate to bring this up, but I do want to ask the question because I think it's the question that I think was relevant. Doctor, thank you for all you've shared this morning, but one of the questions was, would Cargill consider providing, if you will, a month of funding to the, so the RFP can work its way forward and give the county commission time to do this the right way? Would Cargill provide that funding?
You know, I don't have the checkbook.
Okay.
Okay. We have, we've already supplied a grant to Humankind for the year to help with a variety of programs. So I can't answer, if a direct request came to us, I mean, I would certainly take it forward and discuss it with our finance director. What I would say is this, if there was, and I made this point a little bit earlier and I didn't want this to escape, I want it to be clear, from a board of directors, now, I'm going to stop with a Cargill answer, start with a board of directors' answer. If we have a degree of commitment, that somehow there will be an RFP process and that within 30 days, that funding will be there, then I think as a board of directors, we could make some of those hard decisions and say, yes, we can keep this operating until that funding shows up. So if the answer is, how do we keep it there? If we know that this body is committed to finding that funds this year, completing the RFP, then that gives us the ability, bit of the courage, if you will, or the ability to make those choices and say, yes, we're going to keep this open until that funding shows up.
Well, there's obviously two big steps, and they're both very difficult. So the first one is this first decision, and the second one is future funding. And I think both of these are difficult for different reasons, but...
Yeah.
Someone asked me, they said, what is the ending balance? I mean, what... I mean, what's your fiscal year? A calendar year, or do you have something?
July, July.
Okay. So your last ending balance in your last fiscal year, what was it?
So if you look at our annual report, you'll see that we were $300,000 last year to the good. Now, I want to really point out, though, that was with the help of some PPP for staff salaries through COVID. I also want to point out that we received some grant funding that skewed the numbers because of the studios. So if you look at our financials, and we've supplied our 990s audited financials, and we've been very transparent with the county and the city on our financials, and I will tell you that the studio's funding, the way that it came in, it will look as if we had a good year. And we have done better in the last several years with fundraising, grants that we've received, working with the business community. That does not negate the fact that we have, and we own and operate a campus of 10 facilities. We have multiple programs across the board, because we're really trying to do street outreach, emergency shelter, extended stay shelter, intermediate housing with wraparound services, and then permanent supportive housing. And permanent supportive housing, if you guys look at the research, it has a 98% effective rate. That means recidivism, reduction in recidivism. So as we attempt to do all of these things and move people through that process, to Scott's point, it's, you know, a lot of deferred maintenance, it's staffing deficiencies, it's appropriate pay raises for our teams, and then it's a public health issue. I appreciate Commissioner Lopez bringing up social determinants. Shelter and housing is the number one. So I, you know, it's really hard to have someone be, you know, manage their behavioral health if they're focused on where they're going to sleep at night, or a meal, or those kind of basic needs. And the emergency shelters that we're discussing today are a direct link for someone accessing the first time a provider. So the only other organization in Wichita, or Cedric County in Wichita, is Union Rescue Mission, and they do a fantastic job. Really appreciate my colleagues over there. They only serve men, and they have particular program guidelines. They have a way that they want to do things, which is great, Humankind does, so on and so forth. So sometimes they're not the best fit for clients. Sometimes we're not the best fit for clients, right? But what I am telling you is that if you're talking about those that are difficult to serve in this space, that are harder to get into service and then build on getting them permanent placement, these are the folks we're discussing today at emergency winter shelter, to answer your question.
Yeah, I'll try to make this more dynamic. Thank you for that answer. Again, just as the Union Rescue Mission did brief me, they're building another facility downtown to be closer to some of the same reasons why I think people congregate downtown, but I believe they're also intending to expand their effort towards other folks besides just the men. So I don't know exactly how they're going to do that. I don't want to speak for them. I do know that they're transitioning to, if you will, a greater footprint for that very reason, I think. But you mentioned 300,000 to the good, or the word you used, I'm not quite sure exactly what you said there, but do you mean that you ended with 300,000, or are you saying that you ended with 300,000 more than you started with?
There was 300,000 positive operating.
You mean, you were, in other words, you had positive budget performance, you ended better than you started?
Right.
And, of course, a year ago, you did, you did provide these services. I'm going to just spitball. It sounds to me like you have enough funding to get started. You said November the 8th is the date you start normally? Is that what you said?
So typical years, we actually start November 1st, and that's been delayed so that the board can make an informed decision based on today's meeting.
Okay, so I guess my point is, it sounds like you have funds to get started. You want to find replacement funding, obviously, because you're going to spin through some of that, but you do have funding to get started. So there's no immediate need that would say that we're not going to do this because we don't have funding. It sounds like you do have some funds to get started, but you need to find a revenue stream to keep it going. I just want to be, I want to be fair and honest in how we look at this. Okay.
Yeah.
That's good. And then, I guess my final, my final concern and comment is, I mean, we do know that all of us are involved in a number of things in this community, and people on the board of directors that are connected to government, it makes it, it makes it a little bit different to have this be forced today. Because, again, going back to what Commissioner Dennis said earlier, there are literally thousands of organizations that don't have someone to essentially fight that battle from within our own, within government. But this one's a little bit different, because there are at least a couple of members on the board, one across the street and one over here, that are on the board of directors. And so that makes this a little bit more, a little bit more difficult for me as well. But I'm reflecting back to, you know, a decision we made just a few months ago on the African, on the Kansas African American Museum. The Wichita Eagle did, you know, make some very concerning comments about that, because there was conflicts of interest that weren't recognized. And so I want to be very careful here today not to do that again. So thank you for all your answers and all the answers to those questions. And with that, I'll also talk my comments. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. We've got one more. I think everybody's had their say, and so, and your, all your responses have been sometimes repetitive, but we got one more, because Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you to everyone for this robust conversation. I think that my colleague to the left was, I've been waiting to disclose the fact that I do sit on this board. I am board member of Humankind Ministries. I have been, I think this is my second year, being on this board. I receive no financial, I have no financial interest in this, and I receive no, nothing financial personally from this, so want to make sure that I fully disclose that. I did update my substantial interest form when the issue was talked about with the Kansas African American Museum. I have disclosed the fact that I've been on that board multiple times, so I'd just like to kind of get that out of the way. Mike Papun, does that fulfill a disclosure in regards to conflict of interest?
Commissioner.
What additional items do I need to disclose? I want to make sure that everybody is aware that I serve on this board.
Well, Commissioner, as I've mentioned publicly and privately, you are not in violation of the statutes involving having a substantial interest in an organization if you fill out the form and include that in the form, and you do not violate one of the other aspects of the statute, as you mentioned, not receiving anything personally and that sort of thing. So you did not violate those statutes by being involved in this issue, voting on this issue.
Thank you. I will say additionally to that, this was something that was, came, they brought it to me as a board member, to ask, "How would you ask the county for funds as a general question?" It wasn't in any way, shape, or form in any other way than that. That is just the nature of how government works. When you don't know how it is, you ask questions. And so that was how this came about. So I want to make sure that we're all aware how this did come about to the county commission, because we do, that's been previously mentioned, have the same mission. We do serve a lot of the same population of people. There are a number of things that I'd like to address. I know that we have been kind of lengthy on this, but I'd like to have my time to discuss, if that's okay. So we're talking about a certain population of people, a subpopulation of people, that no one else addresses. That's one. The second part is, I know that we have talked about this being a city issue in the past. And so back on September 23rd, I sent a very sort of detailed, lengthy email that included the link that Commissioner Lopez referenced, in addition to another one from NACO about the county's role in ending chronic homelessness. Each commissioner received that, each council member received that prior to the en banc meeting that we were talking about homelessness, Mental Health and Substance Abuse Act. So we've all had the opportunity to read those reports. So I understand that for many years, homelessness has often been thought of as a county issue and, or a city issue, excuse me. And that's because budgets are about priorities of elected bodies. And for a long time, you know, this body hasn't looked like this. This body hasn't been focused on social services. This body hasn't been focused on the public health aspect of people in our community. And so, for whatever reason, it's different now. You know, there are multiple counties around the United States, as referenced in the county's role in ending homelessness, that was, again, sent to everybody on September 23rd. Johnson County, Iowa, they run a shelter house. Erie County, Pennsylvania, they partnered with local hotels to establish an isolation program. Steel County, Minnesota, they offer transitional housing. Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, I mean, I could go on. There are multiple counties around the nation that do support homeless services, because they understand that homelessness is oftentimes, and I've said this before, a visual representation of mental illness, substance misuse can sometimes be a result of domestic violence situations, a result of not being able to navigate the criminal justice system. For whatever reason, there are multiple intersections of what county government does and our homeless population that is on the streets currently. You know, I, I understand, I think one of my colleagues talked about picking winners and losers. I don't know that there's really any winners in this situation. There are winners when people come to a shelter and they are offered support, that then they're able to move through the system, right? That's when, that's when you do see a winner. But the losers are the 200 people that are out on the streets trying to stay warm. So I understand that this is a tricky situation. There are a number of nonprofits that operate in our community, and as some have mentioned, you know, this could open the floodgates to others to come and ask for funds. Well, I would, I would say that we have a population of people who need our help right now, and as a public health, public safety entity, I believe it is our responsibility to ensure that we are taking care of those in our community who are the most vulnerable, so that they don't end up in our jail. It costs 70-plus dollars a day for someone to be in our jail. If they visit an emergency room, are they really getting the help that they need? Or are they just sort of maintaining, you know, a problem that they haven't received the help for? So by funding this emergency shelter, we do allow other opportunities to support that permanent supportive housing model, and there are whole facets of things that by we, by us supporting this shelter, this life-saving shelter, we are really doing the right thing, in my opinion. So I understand, you know, you got to, you got to vote however you vote, but I will make a motion to approve the funding, the one-time funding request of $125,000 to Humankind Ministries. I'll second that.
Okay. I'll make a substitute motion that we issue a RFP for 200, up to $200,000 to be done within 30 days for the purpose of emergency winter overflow shelter with no barriers.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Mr. Papun, can we write an RFP that limited, so that only one person can apply?
And we may want to get, Mike Papun, County Council, we may want to get Joe Thomas's view on this as well. Typically, we do not try to write RFPs that are so narrowly construed that it could only apply to one vendor, as was discussed earlier. At the other time, you can write broader RFPs, and, and under an RFP system, typically you don't have to just take the lowest bid or that sort of thing. You can, you can actually see what the best proposal is for our needs, and we do that in many cases, regardless of price. So I think it would, I don't know that it would be appropriate to narrowly tailor it to one, one vendor, and we don't typically do that with RFPs, I guess would be my response.
I think it sets us up for a lot of criticism if we write it so that only one can apply. Second question I have for you is, does our code of ethics apply anyplace in the discussion today?
I mean, you have a code of ethics that was adopted prior to, just prior to when I came on board, that, that addresses potential conflicts of interest. There are no penalties associated with the code of ethics, it's just for commissioners to review and follow as, as they deem, deem appropriate.
Well, I, I can't support either one of the motions today. I think that the second, the substitute motion will end up being illegal for the county to send out an RFP that only one organization can respond to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dennis, I respectfully disagree. I've not heard one thing. It's been commented numerous times that nobody knows for sure who could or could not supply a no-barrier service, even if it's a two beds, even if it's five beds. So unless I've heard anybody guaranteeing that this is the only group that can do this, then, then I would, I would agree with you. But I have not, unless you've heard differently, and it's been going on for quite a while here, discussion, I've not heard one person say, "We're the only team that can do this, and nobody else in the world, nobody else in the community can do that." That's why I've, I put this motion out there, and that, that will prove if they can or can't. So my motion is there. If there's a second, great. If it's not, then it'll die a lack of a second. Commissioner Dennis.
Again, my concern is with the no-barrier portion of this motion that you've got in place. It's just like the question I ask about the Peterbilt. The answer was...
I get you. I understand, I understand.
Can I finish up, please? Thank you. It's just like the speaker mentioned that the Freightliner couldn't apply. Well, that's true. That's why we can't write a RFP that only Peterbilt could apply, just because Freightliner doesn't make a Peterbilt. They can't apply. This is at the board now, sir.
I'm, I'm...
Thank you. So I strongly object to us having any kind of an RFP that goes out that only one agency can apply to. Thank you.
Okay. Respectfully, and announcing at the bench that it is a potentially illegal RFP is not probably good words to use officially, because it's, we don't know if it's legal or not, A, and, again, we don't know that there's an exclusive provider, B. So I made a motion to do this, and there's not a second, so it dies from a lack of a second. So we go back to the first motion. There's been a motion and a second. Any other comment? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner, or Chairman Meitzner?
Okay. Commission, you've put me in an incredible spot. Humankind, you've put me in an incredible spot. I am the swing vote on this. I don't like it at all. I think everything going forward, I want to announce to the public that I'm not taking last-minute phone calls for last-minute monies for $10, $10,000, $125,000. I want the city to step up and write a check right now for $125,000, because they're in charge, that mayor, and that council's in charge of homeless. So with that, I will vote to approve this, and I'll vote aye, and let's move on. We will take a 10-minute break and come back for the next items. We will take a 10-minute break and come back for the next items. We back? Okay, we are back from recess. My apologies to the public for a little bit of a almost anger moment, so we will move on. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Resolution Regulating the Discharge of Firearms Across Property Boundaries.
Morning, Commissioners Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. The resolution that's being presented today was originally presented in front of you during your meeting on October 21st. At that time, the Board voted to take this item back up again today. Just as a quick summary of the resolution, it would make it a Sedgwick County Code violation for someone to shoot a firearm and have the bullet leave that property and go onto somebody else's property. There's a handful of exceptions. One would be if the property owner, who the bullet went onto, had provided some sort of consent to that. Self-defense or defense of others is also an exception. Law enforcement officers in line of duty, and then lastly, hunting with some limitations, as long as the bullet doesn't strike or travel in the vicinity of any person, residence, or other structure on the other property. This resolution would be approved, it'd be a $500 maximum fine. The Sheriff's Office would be tasked with administering and enforcing the resolution. Any potential violations would be county code violations prosecuted in county court by the county council's office. After October 21st, Commissioner Cruz hosted a town hall meeting on this subject. Commissioner Howell's Citizens Advisory Board also held a special meeting last week on this draft resolution as well. And it's my understanding that the Sheriff's Office has met with people around the neighborhood in the city of Derby, and kind of on the edge of the city of Derby, where there were some folks who spoke at your meeting on October 21st. I think they have had conversations with some of those folks. So the resolution is back in front of you today for your review and potential action. The recommended action from county staff is to take, to act as the Board deems necessary, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you for the recapping that. I know two weeks ago, we talked about this, a lot of comments were made from the bench, and if there's any new material that you need to share, Commissioners, that'd be great. If not, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution regulating the discharge of firearms across property boundaries.
I second that, Chairman.
Just a motion and a second. Commissioner Cruz?
I'd just like to make a few comments. I appreciate the extra time that we were allowed to discuss this with constituents. I would fully support it if the fine was substantial enough to fully cover the cost of this resolution. The current fine in place, I don't believe, will be enough to simply cover the cost of the investigation. When talking about this resolution, I believe in Sedgwick County, we have responsible gun owners, and I think that this resolution is being passed and proposed because of bad actors. And our current system allows for citizens to take civil action, and as such, if neighbors cannot resolve issues on their front porch or in their backyards, then take civil recourse. I truly don't believe that this, what is being called a deterrent, will solve the problem at hand. In addition, if we're going to talk about enacting resolutions, why aren't we addressing regulating backstops, or the directional place where people are shooting, or the proximities to neighborhoods? Those are some of the questions that I have, and I will not be supporting this today because of these reasons and others. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just, I do want to be respectful to people. I do know there's a couple people in the audience, I believe, that want to speak a little bit, so I don't know if that's acceptable to Chairman or not, but I would just say this, that the $500 fine that's been proposed in this resolution is the maximum fine that's allowed by Sedgwick County, and if we wanted to go to $1,000, by the way, I'm working with Justin to make that change in the future, I believe we'll see that before us here in a few weeks, but $1,000 is the maximum fine allowed by state law for any county, for any county code violation, so we are limited. Whether or not we recoup the cost really isn't the point. I think there needs to be opportunities for the sheriff to do his job. He wants this tool in his toolbox. I want responsible gun usage. I, to quote myself from a couple weeks ago, I'm an extreme Second Amendment advocate. This is not in any way trying to harm Second Amendment freedom, but we do have to make sure when we shoot our firearms, we do so responsibly and do it in a way that doesn't threaten or harm other people or property. I've worked with all the appropriate organizations to make sure this language was agreeable. As you mentioned, Mr. Wagner, we did meet with both neighborhoods on either side of this issue. I was at both of those meetings. I also had a, as you mentioned, Citizen Advisory Board, plus I also had an ad hoc informal coffee meeting where the topic was also discussed there. So at least four times, we have met, and I've taken in comments. I've yet to find, I had maybe a couple people so far that were concerned that this wasn't enforceable, that this was, maybe it wasn't enough money, or they're also, some people were concerned that this might segue into other types of restrictions, and some of the restrictions mentioned a moment ago, I'd be very concerned about, and I can explain reasons why, if anybody's interested. I don't know that we ought to get into the issue of how to tell people to be responsible, we just need to make sure that they are responsible. This is an issue of responsibility, making sure that they are taking their gun activities very seriously, and if they fail to do that, there will be consequences, or could be consequences. But how to do that is a private matter, and so I don't want to go there, because I don't think that's appropriate, or actually, it doesn't really solve the problem, in my opinion. There are a number of other ideas I've worked with Justin on, I'm not going to get into that today, but there are things we could do, potentially, and again, I'm open to exploring those ideas, and something I'm working on. As we pass this resolution today, these are the things I'm working on, not saying we would do any of them, but I'd like to understand what our options are. So everything I want to, everything I would support here is regarding responsible gun usage. So whoever is shooting firearms has responsibility for every bullet where it lands and what it does, and that's all this does. And for the people on the one side, if they do that responsibly, there's no reason to fear this resolution. It will never come after them in any way, unless they fail to do that. Then there's no options, the sheriff would have options. And if the other side never has a bullet coming into their neighborhood, they have no reason to be concerned about those activities across the tree line, because shooting guns is perfectly legal and the unincorporated. So in fact, Chairman, I'm glad to see this happen, I'm glad to support it today. I could talk for another hour or two, I don't think anybody wants that, so I'll stop, but Chairman, if you want to recognize people in the audience, it's your choice. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Howell. And Commissioner Dennis wants to make a comment, but just, how many, or have you wanted to comment to address us? Is there anybody here in the audience? You? Just one? Okay, well, you want to make your comment first?
My comment takes about two seconds. I brought it up to my District Advisory Board Monday night, and they were in favor of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and sir, since you sat through the first two hours, I feel guilty saying you can't comment. So if you want to come up and address us for a few minutes, please do so.
I'd say I'll put a quick poll.
Okay, anybody else want to address? Okay.
Just a final comment. Chairman, I should mention, my cab board did vote eight to one in favor. Thank you.
Okay, is that your final comment? Okay, all right. Okay, no pun intended, really. Okay, here we go. So we are back to the bench, been a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion carries. All right, thank you for your work on that. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, Public Hearing for the Proposed Adoption of the Uniform Plumbing Code 2021 Edition.
Chris, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Chris Labrum, Director of MABCD, to lead off with, I do apologize for the timing of this, that's a publication error on my part, so given the timing of our presentations and staff meeting, et cetera, we had stated to you all and in our public meetings that we would hold this hearing on the 10th of November, but we sent our original letter to the newspaper, and so the Derby Enquirer had published this third date. So you'll see that reflected in our recommendation that we allow for public comment, both this week and next week, before we adopt the resolutions. So to begin with, we are looking at the Uniform Plumbing Code. This slide is just a reminder that you've seen before, and again, want to make sure that we get this out publicly. Currently, we're under two codes on the county side, which includes the IPC. We're under a single code, which is the UPC on the city side, and this adoption will take us back to one code throughout our jurisdiction, which is the UPC. It is Article III of our UBTC, Unified Building and Trade Code. This does jump us from the 15 edition to the 21 edition, so we're very, very happy to be fully caught up there. This is an International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials, or an IATMO code. The producers of this, Brian Rogers, as a regional representative of IATMO, actually made the trip down, so we appreciate him being here today, and if you have any questions of him, I'm sure he would be happy to answer those. Does reflect and adopts not only the updated code, but our local amendments as a standard, and it's administratively, based on everything I just said, it does represent a relatively large shift in the industry. The actual plumbing that will occur is not greatly significant based on what we've been doing and allowing to now. This also is a reminder, lists the codes that were coordinated with and through this to ensure there's no conflict. And again, also, as somewhat described earlier, from our current dual-code setup that includes the I code and the amendments that are listed there, this will jump us back into one code, the 21 Uniform Plumbing with 64 amendments. So that is a fair number of amendments, but there was an effort made here to accommodate all of the international code tenants that we feel are important to the industry. that includes the I code and the amendments that are listed there, this will jump us back into one code, the 21 Uniform Plumbing with 64 amendments. So, that is a fair number of amendments, but there was an effort made here to accommodate all of the international code tenants that we feel are important to the industry. So, on that note, the adoption process that we like to describe a little bit, our appeals board, and this is reflected in the new code, too, that that is now a nine-member board. Greatly appreciate their work. We've also got at least one board member still here. I actually, I debated increasing the number of members on this code with the board for some time. This increases the diversity of the board and really has been successful. They did a phenomenal job, came together, awesome coordination, and again, it represented all aspects of the industry, and so, very, very happy to see their effort. A lot of, they deserve a lot of accommodation. Yes, thanks, sorry. They deserve a great thanks for their work. Also included, of course, coordination across our industry associates, which included the Plumbing, Heating and Cooling Contractors Association, of course, IATMO, and our WABR representatives, and then, as stated earlier, we think we've well accommodated the desired tenants of the international code. So, as far as timeline, seeking to open the public hearing today, obviously to take public comments for those here, then that we would recess that until next week, in which case, I would ask that you reopen, take further public comment as required, close the public hearing and adopt at that time. We are currently scheduled to be in front of the city council on the 16th, and then to go effective with the tenants of the code on the 1st. I've stated this for the commission previously as well. Normally, we like to give a little more time than that, but in this case, we've got technology, we've got industry components that folks want to use, so we don't want to slow them down with the new technology in the code. We'll go ahead and go effective with this code on 1 January, and our chiefs, in both the case of plumbing and mechanical, our chiefs will be able to work with contractors, and if any projects are started prior to this implementation date, we can, we have a process that will accommodate and ensure that they're not adversely affected by a short turn on the new code adoption. So, a few of the ones that we want to show publicly today, obviously, all 64 have been published and are available for public viewing. A lot of discussion regarding air admittance valves, specifically a valve that allows air to be introduced into the system versus a vent, so reducing the number of vents, the amount of piping required, number of penetrations in a building. These are specifically, have been put in place for areas, very, comes into play very often with remodels, where it would be impractical structurally or otherwise to run additional plumbing. So, the board, the board looked at this several times. There's a very robust definition in the code. There is a good description of those times in which they would be authorized, and then, as a matter of policy, though not, though we did not publish it in the code, the board and as well as staff, of course, is going to track the requests for, the authorization of, and the use of the AAVs there to ensure that we are doing, doing that properly, that we're keeping an eye on that, and that we are letting the industry use those as we have stated in the code that we will. Next, and I know Chairman Meitzner wanted me to make sure that I kept this one in there. So, the accessing and flushing of dead legs. So, dead legs come into play when either systems have been removed from the plumbing, or the plumbing accommodates the potential future addition of systems. We have a local stipulation that we want to ensure those are capped in a way that they can be accessed, to be flushed and cleaned, so that we don't create something that would harbor a contaminant and potentially cause a health risk within the system. Steel nail plates is another one that gets a lot of discussion because of the expense, so that we allow a slightly smaller nail plate than actually the I code, and it is accounted for in the U code. We ensure that that is still, still meets safety standards, but that we have that allowance there, again, to help the industry. We also have an allowance for commercial drainage connections. This is also to reduce contamination and a safety factor that allows indirect damage, drainage of commercial kitchen sinks and appliances. Given especially some of the increases in seismic activity that we start to see, board ensured that we do have some seismic event protection. It is slightly more robust than the baseline code, and does, specific to water heaters, when those are not on the baseline foundation of the structure, we do ensure that they are supported to help reduce the risk of damage, especially to the structure or our individuals, of course. Also stipulations to allow temperature and pressure relief from water heaters in those areas where we're not able to get sufficient piping and drain associated with those. There can, the system will be approved to allow a minimal amount of drainage, and then, will also include a water alarm to alert occupants to a potential water problem and protect the structure. So, also, one to assist and help with the industry, this is an I code tenant that allows use of manufacturer-approved one-step primer and glue solvent cement, it's often called blue glue, as you see there in the picture. So, again, yeah, just avoiding you having to put a primer and then the, followed by the cement. Vent terminations, obviously, always trying to reduce the number of penetrations in and out of structures as well, and so, where, where required, we do have an allowance that vents can exit through a sidewall versus requiring them to go through the rooftop. Trap seal protection devices, also a protect, a health protection against contamination and damage here allows the use of a barrier-type trap seal protect device. This is specific, especially to floor drains that are not used as often, and again, those, as long as they're manufacturer-approved, we allow that for slightly increased level of safety, as well as assistance with expense. And then, one that has been a matter of policy, mainly, of course, I shouldn't say mainly, this applies in the city of Wichita, obviously applies throughout the jurisdiction, but to the city sewer system. So, as a matter of policy between both Public Works and us, we've required that sump pumps and drains discharged to the storm drain versus going into the sanitary sewer and requiring all of that excess water to be treated, but it has not been in code previously, which makes it difficult to enforce. So, this actually formalizes that in the code, will help us more so with the enforcement of proper permits, proper inspections, ensuring that those drains and sump pumps are discharging to the proper areas, and then especially if there's any curb cut or connection with any public works roadway, that those, that would be a mechanism to also ensure that they, that's been properly permitted and reviewed by city engineering. So, with that, again, it is our recommendation that we openly open the public hearing, receive public comment, and then recess the public hearing until the November 10 regular BOCC meeting. I will also happily stand for any questions, and I've also got Plumbing Chief Jason Little here, if you have any questions for him.
Okay. Is there any questions from the bench? I don't see any. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm sorry. I just want to clarify a couple of things. So, the air admittance valves, by application to get a waiver for new construction, that's part of this?
Yes. Yes, that is correct. So, Mr. Little can still approve those for use in commercial and residential new construction, as well as remodel.
Okay. And just confirm for me, no one's died in the last few years since we passed the IPC on this, right?
That is correct. They are mechanical device.
You're laughing at me, but you know what I'm talking about. Okay, thank you. I was accused. I want to make sure, clarify that. Okay, then the second thing is, I want to say, on the flushing of the dead legs, does that require a valve to do that flush?
Is a valve or a cap, correct, that could be removed?
They have to cut the cap, or the, I mean, so is it, is it a temporary way to flush it, or is there?
A valve. So, it would be a valve?
Could be a valve. Should be a valve, okay. And the nail plates can be wider, but they don't have to be any wider than the-
Correct.
-piping to be protected. Very good, okay.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Then, I want to say, I love the blue glue. That's awesome. The seismic requirements for hot water tanks, is that only if, when does that, when does that become a requirement? Is that for residential or commercial order?
I'll let Mr. Little describe that.
For the record, I am Jason Little, Chief Plumbing Inspector for the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, Wichita and Sedgwick County. That provision is mostly, I believe the language addresses elevated water heaters that are going to be in attics or other places, because we do see them above the ceiling sometimes to preserve floor space and for aesthetic reasons in a structure, and we have had some seismic activity that had increased a little bit, especially on the east side. So, just in those instances where we have more exposure to a potential damage to the structure or personal injury, we want to start getting those strapped in. We don't know what the future's going to hold. There has been no formal increase or change in the seismic designation for our activity level at this point, but we want to be proactive for something as inexpensive as a couple of pieces of strap to help protect our citizens.
Thank you, Jason Little, for all you do for the county. On the curb cut for the, for the discharge of sump pump, that's generally prohibited. That's not allowed by waiver or anything, but there are some out there that are out there like that. Are they grandfathered? And if you find a new one that's installed that way, what would happen?
Several questions there. Let me try to handle them one at a time. Curb cuts can be allowed by waiver by the city engineer's office. There are some instances where the property owner is experiencing some kind of a problem with drainage. There are instances where the surface topography is not such as to allow the water to drain on the surface well and protect that structure's foundation from movement and damage. So, there are, there is a process by which they can be approved. But what's happened is that so many of these have been done that were not approved and not done in a prudent and workman-like fashion that streets is experiencing an extreme amount of damage. And when I say extreme, to me, a repair that costs roads and streets $10,000 because water got under the roadway and ate up the road base and softened it, and now you've got a monster chuck hole that keeps coming back and keeps coming back, that's, that's something that we've got to stop. And no, there'll be no grandfathering, where we are experiencing expenses, taxpayers and maintenance personnel trying to maintain good streets and roads. We can't allow it to stay just because it was there before this was enacted. That's causing damage that we've got to stop.
So, if you find one of these in the community that's, say, 20 or 30 years old, they-
We're going to work with them to try to find alternative methods to address their problem, or have them fill out the permit process and redo it so that it does comply with the engineering standards for a workman-like fashion that will not damage the roadbed and the curb and gutters.
Thank you for that clarification. So, just generally speaking, I know that we have to have a hearing here, but my personal comment is, I love the larger board. I think the diversity is fantastic. I love the changes that you described today. I think we're balanced, and the compromise between these codes is duly noted. I think that everyone's done a great job. Thank you to the board for your work on this. I think we have moved the ball forward. I'm glad to go back to one code that makes sense for both sides of this debate, and I think virtually everything I've asked for, I think, has been, has been addressed. So, I want to say thank you to all of you that had a part to this. I think that we have certainly moved in the right direction, and I look forward to hearing the comments from the public. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. I don't see any other comments at this time. We'll go to the public for comments. Anybody in the public like to address the commission on this issue or this item? Okay. I see nods of no, so we will, okay, no, no public comment? Okay. We will bring the discussion back to the bench. Any other questions for Chris or others? I don't see any at this time, so we will, are we voting to come back a week from now for approval? Does that even need to be voted on, that we vote? Okay, I'll make a motion that we, that we return this item next week for final approval and an open comment at that time as well. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item H, public hearing for the proposed adoption of the International Mechanical Code 2021 Edition.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Labram, welcome back.
So, thank you. And yes, for the record, Chris Labram, MABCD, this time with the mechanical codes, similar protocol. This is Article V of our UBTC, and again, also updates, updated code as well as our local amendments. This applies, of course, to our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, both commercial and residential throughout the county. This is an international code, so fits within the ICC family of codes, and of course, seeking to keep our trades codes up to date. Similar with the plumbing code, this is the list of coordinated codes that we work with to ensure there are no conflicts. This was latest, or last updated with the 2018 version. That was done in November of 18. Since then, and changes to the code, we've needed to renumber, so you will see as we go through this, a lot of our changes were administrative, needed to correct and renumber seven of our sections to meet new code references. We have, again, five that have been, five code sections, that's within the baseline code, that were updated, numbering references, et cetera, changed, and then, of course, the ripple that goes with that. We did delete one complete section from our UBTC. That is to do with stop work procedures. So, again, when we find unpermitted or work that has not received a permit or an inspection, the good news there is that the baseline code has incorporated procedures that we have been using via amendment, so we're always happy to see that when we feel like we're a little, a little ahead of the game. And then, we did add one item through this that relates to safety with safety tie-offs, et cetera, for maintenance workers who would be working on a roof or other areas to access a unit, and what that does is allows us to approve that safety equipment at the local level. There are times when we're kind of in between a situation where you either have a full set of OSHA guidance, or you have nothing, and so this gives us something in between when, where the, the full guidance for those systems does not necessarily apply, but there's nothing within the code that gives you a specific system or tie-off harnesses, attachments to work with, so Mr. Nethercot is able to review those and approve those. Of course, we take those to the board if, for review if there's any question with them as well. So, the work done on this review was handled by the Board of Mechanical Appeals, industry associates who are consulted, as you see there, with the Kansas Cooling Contractors Association, our local sheet metal workers, and the Wichita Builders Association. We do have two items within here that meet the criteria of substantial changes, though overall, the code is, represents very little change to current practice. Same timeline applies. We're asking that we open and receive a comment today, recess until the 10th, and also seeking to get this in front of city council on the 16th. Also, exactly the same with the effective date. We want to stick with that, 1 January, because there are tenants of this code that our industry wants to use. So, just, I think I've just got three here that we want to make sure that we are putting in front of you all publicly of the amendments. So, one with exhaust outlets and combination fittings, so allows combination exhaust and an intake fitting to minimize the separation distance and allow one exterior wall penetration, as stated earlier, whether plumbing or mechanical, always good to reduce those. Technology has made it to the point that one manifold can be reliably handle both intake and exhaust. So, and I think we covered the fewer penetrations. Then, also access doors within three feet of horizontal terminations. This is one that the board looked at pretty extensively based on the added expense sometimes associated with- associated with having a cleanout or requiring a cleanout of grease ducts and fans that is accessible. Then it was realized that actually by not requiring that, not only is there an added safety risk, but there's generally a long-term added expense. So the board did, and industry did agree, that it is best to require that cleanout to be accessible for, again, for safety purposes and for long-term maintenance effectiveness. Dryer exhaust terminations is another one that was important to address because there's a lot of additional ways to ventilate buildings now, and so the code language had to be robusted to ensure that the proper separation is still being maintained with dryer exhaust and not being reintroduced into the building's air circulation. So again, this just further defines that terminations must be not less than three feet in any direction from an opening and gives a lot of updated data to help both contractors and inspectors ensure that that is the case. And with that, we again recommend to open the public hearing, receive any comment, and recess until the 10th, and I will gladly stand for questions. And Stony Nethercot, as the mechanical chief, is here as well for any questions you may have of him.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Is there any questions for Chris at this time from the bench? I don't see any. So at this time, we'll open up the floor for a public comment. If anybody from the public want to address us on this item. All right. I don't even see shakes of no on this one. Okay, there you go. All right. With that, we will close the public comment and bring the item back to the bench, and I'll make a motion that we defer this for a week to bring it back in a week for, again, public hearing and final vote. There's a motion and a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye, thank you. Thanks, Chris, and your staff for all the hard work. Next item, please.
Item I, Approved Subrecipient Agreement Between Cedric County and S M G Related to the 2021 American Rescue Plan Act Shuttered Venue Operating Grant.
Hello, Mike. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Fessinger, Assistant County Counselor. Before you this morning is a subrecipient agreement between the county and S M G, our arena operator. As a bit of background on this, due to the losses incurred by the entrusted bank arena throughout the pandemic, the county, with S M G's cooperation, applied for and received a shuttered venue operators grant, or an S V O G for short, in the amount of $9 million, I'm sorry, $9,452,279.25. So this roughly $9.5 million was budgeted and allocated to us to cover the arena's personnel, utility, and insurance costs for the period of March 1, 2020, through December 31, 2021. In other words, we took a look at the budget of what it would cost to cover those costs from, during that covered period. That was the number that S M G came up with. That's the number that we used for our application, and that's what was approved. This money can also cover costs related to audiovisual equipment upgrades to accommodate remote meetings, which is a new reality in today's world, and to make other eligible improvements to the arena as well. However, in order for this money to do its job, it needs, there needs to be a mechanism to transfer it from our arena reserve fund, where it currently sits, over to S M G, where it can be used. That's what this subrecipient agreement does. As a result, then, for your consideration, we have this agreement for you today. And it's similar to other subrecipient agreements that we employed while implementing the CARES Act last year. A lot of the same boilerplate that was developed between myself and the consultants. We reused a lot of that for consistency's sake for this agreement, too. However, things do get a little more complicated with this one. As you know, the county has already covered S M G's operating losses pursuant to the already existing Fifth Amendment to the management agreement that we have with S M G. Fortunately, this grant permits us to reimburse our arena reserve fund for payroll, insurance, and utility costs that the county has already reimbursed to keep the arena operational during the covered period, and then allocate up to the remaining balance of the grant to S M G for future payroll, insurance, and utility costs. So again, what we can, well, it's kind of, as I've already said, we can reimburse the arena reserve fund for some of the funds that we've given to S M G as a result of their operating losses pursuant to the management agreement. Our grant application described this potential process, and it was approved with that in mind. So we and our consultants are confident that this is an eligible use for the funds. To the extent that there's any grant money left over, the grant and the accompanying subrecipient agreement allows us to work with S M G to identify future eligible expenditures to use if they exist. And as I've already said, this agreement has been drafted and reviewed by our consultants and myself. It's our recommendation that you approve the agreement and authorize the chairman to sign. At this point, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, Mike, thank you. I know we all got some information about this, all the, what it's going to be used for, so that's a, that's a good grant, I think, from my perspective.
Yes.
Thank you for recognizing that and applying. Commissioner Dennis?
A real quick question. Several months ago, Lindsay came to us with something in the contract that had the big Latin word in it that I didn't understand, and said that we had to pay S M G money because of the losses.
You're probably referring to the force majeure clause.
That's it, force majeure. I remember that now. Thank you.
Yeah, the force majeure clause, it's a common clause across many different contracts, and what it does is if one party has an obligation to another and that obligation is no longer possible due to huge disasters, like in this case, a global pandemic, that relieves the party of some duties. In that case, the way that our, the Fifth Amendment to our management agreement was structured, that force majeure clause caused us to have to cover some losses incurred by S M G because they could not operate during a pandemic.
So that long explanation, and a short question then, following that. Does this then help us with the amount of money that we're having to pay for force majeure?
Yes, yes.
That's my whole question.
Yes, to give you a more complete answer, it's not all the money. It doesn't replace all of the money that we've forwarded to S M G, but it does replace costs associated with payroll, insurance, and utilities.
So out of the millions or whatever it was that Lindsay briefed us on, how much of this are we going to be able to get back?
I'll let Lindsay answer that one for us.
Lindsay Purviso, your CFO.
Morning, Lindsay.
For the record. So I was hoping to get away with not getting up here today, but it doesn't look like I'm that lucky. So to answer your question, Commissioner, through August, we have a total, basically, net operating loss of 2.2 million. We are working now with arena staff to identify of that 2.2 million, how much is personnel, how much is utilities, how much is insurance. We expect it will probably be the vast majority of those funds because personnel are the most expensive, most expensive expense that they have. However, there may be some small portion that isn't covered, and we'll come back and report that to you, probably in our December COVID update, on those specific numbers. I don't have it for you right now.
No problem. Oh, this is good news, and that's the bottom line.
Very good news.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? I don't see any at this time, so I'll make a motion to approve the subrecipient agreement between our county and S M G related to the ARPA Shuttered Venue Operating Grant.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thanks again, Mike. Next item, please.
Item J, Approval of Contract Template for E M T to Paramedic Education Program.
Hello, Interim Director Lenterman. Welcome to the meeting.
Well, good, it's still morning. Good morning, Commissioners.
We beat it by two minutes.
Two minutes, yes.
Okay.
I am Kevin Lander, the interim director of Emergency Medical Services. Here today for the approval of the contract template for our E M T to paramedic program. This program, the work on this program started many, many months ago. Actually, prior to my appointment as interim director, a few of the staff that have worked numerous hours are also here with me today. As you know, Cedric County continues to have a shortage of paramedics. The extraordinary loss of paramedics the last couple of years, along with just the national shortages, has made it difficult to hire paramedics. So we have developed this program to kind of grow our own paramedics within. The funding was already provided in the budget in August, and we were coming today, like I said, to get the contract template approved so that we can start having E M Ts that currently work for us, either in part-time or full-time basis, begin paramedic school, and we will keep them employed throughout the paramedic program, keep their benefits. And at the end of that paramedic program, after they have completely, or successfully completed the program, they will be in the role of paramedic for Cedric County for three years after that. So with that, like I said, we're here looking for the approval of the contract and authorizing the manager to sign the executed contract with the approved employees. So if there are any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. I know that you had a chance to, you and Mr. Masasi were able to brief us all in more depth, and that was very helpful to understand. And I think this presentation summarizes it well. Is any other comments from the, or questions from the bench at this time? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we approve the contract template for E M T to Paramedic Education Program.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks again, Kevin, for all your hard work.
Thank you for your support.
And staff as well. Thank you, guys. Next item, please.
Item K, Presentation of the Quarterly Financial Report.
Good afternoon, Chairman Meitzner. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, for the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. I feel like I'm in the unenviable position of a race against hunger here for, since we're coming on to lunchtime. But I'll do my best to be brief as we go through the quarterly financial report. What I want to do is summarize the performance of the county's finances over the first three months of 2021 and compare those to last year. There are a couple of cases where we'll just sort of summarize some of the things that this means and so we're seeing in the economy. So just as a reminder, this is based on audited financial statements. You've been given a copy of the report. We're going to put it out on the website at the completion of this presentation. As we typically do when we begin the quarterly financial report, we look at projections of year-end cash balances in the six operating funds across the county. And as I look at this, it tells me a couple of things. One, that when we're not affected by COVID or another one-time event, we're seeing some increases in our cash balances, projections from the beginning to the end of the year, indicating increased property tax collections, and in the case of our other property tax-supported funds, increased gas tax collections. Where we're seeing those numbers that are declining in terms of fund balance, that's basically planned in our county general fund. If you recall, last year, we moved money from CARES funding into the county general fund to reimburse for eligible personnel expenses, and then those monies have been spent down throughout the course of the year on COVID-related activities, typically temporary personnel. The $22 million reduction that you see in the non-property tax-supported funds represents ARPA funding that is occurring today and projected decrease in fund balance in those funds. And then finally, in the enterprise and internal service funds, we received insurance proceeds for a claim at the zoo. We're spending those monies as we go through this year and next. Looking at the county property tax-supported funds, of which we have eight, this indicates increases in property tax levies and collections, in addition, sales and use tax, motor vehicle taxes, and other officers' fees, which we'll get into a little more detail. But basically, we're seeing more revenues in these funds, and that trend line that we have there continues upward. Expenditures in those funds are a little bit more erratic than we've seen in the past. We saw a dip last year, but then an increase from 2020 to 2021 of about $15 million. And that's primarily for the temporary employment services. This goes as a little indication of what it would look like without that. We go from about 2.00, or 210 million, down to 195 million in expenditures this year. Our revenues, top 10 revenues in these funds, these property tax-supported funds, basically indicate stability. We're seeing an increase in terms of economic activity in our region as indicated by increased property, sales, motor vehicle, gasoline tax, and so forth, as well as a 16.8% increase year-over-year in those officers' fees, and those are those filing fees in the registered deeds office, the low-interest rate environment, and robust real estate activities contributing to an increase there. So I would think that it's basically steady and on upward trend. The one Medicare fees that we're seeing is related, relation to fewer billings that was a result of less activity with com care in our Medicare billings. Personnel is our biggest expense item, so we break that out and show you that overall and year-over-year, 2.5% increase in personnel expenditures in the property tax-supported funds, again, pretty stable, not much change there. We do see some increases in our pension and social security contributions, and those are a result of those charges currently are residing in these funds for the ARPA premium pay. That'll eventually be picked up by ARPA, but at this point, it's showing in this fund or in these funds. Looking at non-personnel expenditures in the same property tax-supported funds, the only one that I'll draw your attention to here because it's one that is the anomaly, and that's our temporary employment services. We've talked about it before. These are those individuals that are temporarily with us, helping us fight the pandemic, and that represented 9.08 million versus about $30,000 in 2020. If we shift our attention to the fire district for a moment, we'll look at, like property, other property tax-supported funds, we're seeing basically slightly increased revenues from the property tax, and that's a result of an increased tax base in our fire district. Slight or almost flat change in spending year-over-year for the fire district. A little more detail there. You can see the increases in the motor vehicle as well as the property taxes. The big change is a reduction percentage-wise of about 50% in capital outlay. Fewer cash-funded purchasers are planned in the, in the fire district in 2021 versus The non-property tax funds, this is where we're going to begin to see some of the more dramatic effects of the federal stimulus funding that we've received. You note in 2020, it was increased about $105 million over 2019. Those are the CARES dollars. We've received about half that much with ARPA, so we're seeing that reduction in total revenues and through this, the third quarter of the year, of a drop of about $50 million. Since we've received half of the ARPA money, the other half will be coming next year. If we- If we take those two payments out, this is more what the trend line looks like in terms of the revenues in those funds. Expenditures in these non-property tax-supported funds, we're seeing an increase from $79 to about $84 million year-over-year, and that $5 million increase, just as more grants are being awarded through the Division of Finance in 2021, as we're finishing out some of the CARES allocations and so forth. So it's, we're just kind of closing that one out, but some of those payments were made in 2021. Without the CARES and ARPA, this is what we're looking like. So it's kind of a downward trajectory with other types of expenditures. If we look at the details a little more, the top two lines show ARPA revenues received in 2021, none in 2020, and then CARES, the $100 million in 2020 that wasn't received in 2021. So we've got those two. We pull those out, and the chart looks a lot more stable, as we've indicated before. I would point that we see a, an increase of about 34% in federal revenue state pass-through grants. Because of the size of that percentage change, pointing out that it's not really a difference in revenues or the amounts of revenue that's coming. Some revenues that we're receiving in aging were classified as state funds. They were really federal. We're making those accounting corrections, so it looks like a big increase there, but basically the same dollars are flowing into the aging department. Expenditures in the non-property tax-supported funds, where we're seeing the big changes, the 74% increase in grant awards, those are the payments that are going out with CARES funds, in a little more detail there. Premium pay is picked up. There was none in 2020. This represents the first half of the net payments to employees for premium pay. And again, temporary employment services is an area where we've gone from $1 million to $5.5 million over the course of the year. This chart typically will indicate our total fund balance at the end of each quarter, and although it looks erratic, if you look quarter over quarter, it's a pretty steady line typically. It shows that we have increased our fund balances, especially over the last two years, as ARPA and CARES dollars have contributed to that. The same information is shown here. The yellow line on the bottom indicates that the county policy says that we will always maintain at least a 20% of our unrestricted general fund balance, that our unrestricted general fund balance will be at least 20% of our budgeted expenditures, and we have maintained that consistently. As I've been mentioning the last few times that we've presented this report, those low-interest rates have helped us in some areas, but low-interest rates are also contributing to a decline in our investment income. Year-over-year, we saw a decline of about $2.2 million in investment income, from about $2.5 million to about $300,000. We're currently yielding about 3/10 of a percent on our investment portfolio. Our benchmark is the U.S. Treasury Bill, and that's at .09, so we're running at about three times our benchmark. Like to find some other places to put the money, but the statutes preclude us. We are all about safety of the capital, but those investment returns have suffered. Some of the significant capital projects that were completed in the third quarter of 2021 that we'll talk about. The first one is R175, which is the continuation of the county's annual pavement preservation program. Public Works constructed about an inch of asphalt overlay on approximately 23.5 miles of two-lane roadways throughout the county. This is a multi-year funded process, and continuing to take care of this maintenance saves money in the long run. Two bridge projects that are, locations are shown on the map. Both of them are in, near Clearwater on 103rd Street. They were combined so that economies of scale would reduce the costs of them. B492 was a reconstructed, a 1940 structurally deficient bridge on 103rd Street. Traffic in that area runs at about 2,000 vehicles a day, some economic activity in the area. We'll probably continue to see an increase in vehicle traffic there necessitating this Here's a picture of the B492 bridge. B501 was another bridge that was just to the west of that. It was a 1970 bridge that had a structurally deficient rating, and it was also replaced and finished this year, or in the third quarter of 2021. So to summarize the county's financial position, we see that our fiscal condition is sound. We experienced pretty healthy tax base growth, and we maintain healthy fund balances to be able to take care of those spending priorities and spending obligations that we have. Our financial position is strong. As you saw, not only were tax levies and collections increased for current year, but also we're picking up more delinquent taxation as we go forward. There's, continues to be a strong growth in our retail sales and use taxes. Retail sales taxes up $2.25 million year-over-year, which is almost 10% increase. The strong real estate market is continuing to add to our officer fee and those revenues, so we're seeing economic activity that looks pretty good. As we look at the outlook, the things that are on the horizon, that some are good and some give us pause, one is that we continue to have a hard insurance market, and it's getting harder. We're going through the renewal process for a number of the coverages that we have today, and we're looking at increases in premiums on just about all of those lines. We should be paying more and getting less. There are a lot of local employment opportunities, and at the same time, we have workforce challenges. We're hearing it all the time from employers that can't find people, that for one reason or another, people aren't re-entering the workforce, and this is especially hard hitting in our service and our hospitality sectors. Federal stimulus dollars, we've talked about CARES, we've talked about ARPA, those monies are still out there. In addition to our direct allocation, we're looking at those other buckets of funding as more guidance comes out about them. And to take advantage of those opportunities, just on a micro level, the Finance Division has increased our capacity in terms of federal grants procurement and grants administration. Since the last time we visited, we do now have a grants administrator, so we're in the process of getting that stood up so that we can maximize our effectiveness in looking for those revenues. With that, I will stand for questions, and I would recommend you receive and file the report.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Appreciate that it looks like we're getting back to a stability environment and knowing that ARPA is still going to have ups and downs in the charts, but it looks, thank you for the report. Anybody else have any comments? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to receive and file the quarterly financial report. Being no comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item L, Report of the Boards of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on October 28, 2021.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts results in four items that we bring to you today. The first one is the 2021-2022 Property Insurance Deductible Buydown for Risk Management, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from JEM underwriting managers, and it's for property insurance minimum windstorm and hail deductible buyback, and that's for an estimated total cost of $58,830. Item number two is cremation services, cremation services for Regional Forensic Science Center, and this recommendation is to accept the bid from Preferred Mortuary Services LLC at the rates listed, and this will be for a period of three years with two one-year options to renew. Item number three is the Employee Ancillary Benefits, COBRA benefits for Human Resources, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Flexible Benefit Administrators Incorporated at the rates listed, and this contract starts in August of 2022, will go through December 31 of 2024, and then have two one-year options to renew. And our final item, item number four, Employee Ancillary Benefits for Employee Assistance Program, recommendation is to accept the proposal from Impact Incorporated at the rates listed. This contract will start on January 1, 2022, for a period, excuse me, for a period of three years, ending in December 31, 2024, and it will also have two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay, are there any questions on the Board of Bids? I don't see any, so Joe, make a motion to approve the report of the Board of Bids Contracts Regular Meeting.
Okay.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you. Commissioners, I'll make a motion that we do an off-agenda item related to a letter being sent to the Governor in Topeka.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second to do an off-agenda item. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you. The Commissioners, we all received a draft of the letter that we discussed yesterday related to the recent news about the state ceasing funding as of November 30 on the WSU testing lab and other things. So we had asked a letter to be written, drafted, and if we, I don't know if we had to have to read it into the record or can it just be published? I don't, either way, anyway, has anybody got any comments? I'm good with the letter. Done in a rapid case, so anybody, oh, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Can we go over this a little bit? Because it's just a little bit, I think it's just kind of wordy. It might, if we could make it a little bit easier to understand, I think it might be quick and simple to have someone look at faster and not reread multiple sentences.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think the concept there is we get something in front of you, and if you want to massage it from the bench, that's fine.
Let's just do paragraph by paragraph, then. You want to read the first paragraph and then make your comments about how wordy it is? Or you want me to read it?
I could read it.
I mean, it doesn't matter.
There you go. Why don't you read it?
Absolutely.
Please.
Absolutely, Commissioner.
There's only three paragraphs for the public watching. We'll do the first of them.
We can add more. It is with the utmost urgency that we send this communication respectfully to Governor Laura Kelly, our elected representatives of the Senate and House, Kansas Senate and the Kansas House, and Secretary Lee Norman with the Department of Health and Environment. Sedgwick County was recently made aware that the Kansas Department of Health and Environment will no longer be funding COVID-19 mass testing in lab sites such as Wichita State University's MDL Community Test Lab. We must stress, as we continue to work through this pandemic, testing has been our top priority and the ability for free, uncomplicated access to testing for our community. We strongly request and recommend your consideration in utilizing state ARPA funding towards continued funding of COVID-19 mass testing and lab sites for our state, region, and county.
Okay, that's the first paragraph. Does anybody have any comments? I think adding Kansas in front of the Senate and House is a good addition on the second line there.
Notice, notice, yes.
What else? Oh, Commissioner Howell, sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. Just, I know this is a bit stylistic, but I think that the sentence, the third line down, that sentence that starts with Sedgwick County was recently made, I think that should be a new paragraph. And second of all, the list of reasons why, it talks about ability for free, uncomplicated access. I think I'd like to add the word, either the word "fast" or "dynamic response," because there is an aspect, I had one COVID test, it took me 11 days to get the answer back. It's not just that it's expensive, that's a pretty big problem, but 11 days doesn't work. You know, the MDL, it's part of a day, and that's an enormous, if the state's going to set up a lab, they can't go back to this multi-day response. We've got to keep things quick, and that's the only way that this works, and that's a very important word, to add something regarding the timeliness of these test results.
So would you like to say timely results, Chairman?
Well, I like the word "fast" because it's a simple, easy-to-understand word, but...
Fast results?
Fast results. Or quick results, maybe that's a better word.
So it would read, "We must stress, as we continue to work through this pandemic, testing has been our top priority and the ability for free, comma, fast results, uncomplicated access to testing for our community."
I think the exact wording there could be massaged by someone that's better than me, but I think my point is I'd like to include the idea that it's quick.
Results.
Let me add one more word. There are different kinds of testing. One thing the MDL provides, which I think needs to be noted here as well, it's PCR. This is not just, you know, the fast, rapid test that people tend to criticize. This is the highest level, this is the gold standard that we talk about. This is the gold standard testing, so it's accurate and fast. Those are the words, I would just like to incorporate those ideas, because if the state's going to set up a lab, they've got to be equivalent to that, and I don't think they can do it, in my opinion. We'll see. Thank you.
You know, I appreciate that, but also, don't, doesn't the testing lab, don't they do more than just?
They do all kinds, yes. But the one thing we're so dependent on right now in this community is, is that high, accurate, gold-standard PCR test. It's almost a couple of hours. It's just...
Maybe that would complicate if we added other things that they're...
Yeah, all right.
Emphasi, I mean, they're looking at stuff through the school year, but...
My only concern is, you know, the state's trying to do something. I don't know what that is, but if they're going to try to replace this, they've got to have the same beautiful, wonderful things about our lab, otherwise it's not going to help us. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
And something, Howell, I don't know how you incorporate it, but following along with Commissioner Howell, our MDL can give us the answer whether or not it's just the flu, or COVID, or SARS, whatever tests that they want to implement, first of all, it's got to be quick. We can't, don't have time to go back and forth, but it also has to be comprehensive.
Okay, and Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I just don't know if we can make this a little less wordy, because when you read it, it's just such, the sentences are just really long. Like, "It is with the utmost urgency that we send this communication respectfully to Governor Kelly, Laura Kelly, our elected representatives of the Kansas State Senate and House..." Wait.
I think that first sentence could be taken out, because we're going to address it to the Governor.
Just to the Governor?
Well, we can address it, we can address three different letters to the Governor, the Senate, the House, and then to Dr. Norman in the address when we put it on Commissioner Letterhead, so we could take out that first sentence theoretically.
Okay, and I know it says, there are a couple of these sentences that say, you know, we, can we, at the last one, where it says, "We strongly recommend," or "request and recommend," can it be like the county commissioners and not just "we" repeatedly? Does that make it seem stronger, like it's directly coming from us?
Sedgwick County Commissioners, absolutely.
And that's repeated at the end of the second paragraph, too. We are optimistic. Commissioner Cruz? Oh, you have some more at this time?
No, no.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Cruz?
Um...
Should we be specific in our request? Is there a dollar amount that we should be specific to? Is there a date that we should be funding this through?
So, the idea, I thought, was 13 million through May of next year, from our conversation? Is that, yeah, yeah, please.
Sorry to invite myself to the podium. Lindsay Perusso, your CFO. So, related to ARPA funding, I think probably what you all would want to do is just to guarantee funding support through a certain date. There is still ambiguity that we're hearing about related to federal mandates, testing, vaccines, and all of that, and so my fear is if you ask for 13 million and it's not enough, or if it's not going to cover, you know, if there's going to be a regional approach, I just, I would fear that if we ask for a specific dollar amount, that we will run out, and then we won't have time to respond in a timely fashion in Sedgwick County with our ARPA funds, if that's what you want.
Sure, and I totally get that. I, I would like to see some sort of, you know, instead of an, you know...
Along your, along your question, I think we've heard that the, the lab is saying, can we at least be operational or funded through the end of school year, meaning May or June 1st?
Twenty-two.
Yeah, so if we say at this point, knowing always we'll have time, we can come back later, so maybe an end date through the 1st of June?
Okay.
Whenever school's out, when is school out?
May.
May?
End of May, I think, yeah.
I think that's a good...
And that was a part of Andy Slapp's request, email, yes, sir.
Chairman, I, I think we should reach out to Andy and sync whatever date that they
are asking. It'll be sometime around the end of May.
All right.
Okay, second paragraph?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. "Our schools, businesses, and residents rely on Wichita State University MDL Community Testing Lab to complete an average of 6,000 tests a week and 12,000 a week during peak times. Today, teachers and students are in the classroom thriving and learning. Employers depend on rapid testing so employees are able to return to work after a potential exposure or troubling symptoms without infecting their coworkers. Rapid testing capabilities are ensuring that schools and businesses are able to continue operating. We believe the capability and access to mass testing and lab sites locally is vital to the happiness and overall health of our community during this pandemic. We're going to change to Sedgwick County Commissioners are optimistic that our number of COVID-19 positive cases are trending downward through the continued push for vaccinations and testing options available to this community and region."
Okay, paragraph. Yep, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I think it's important to, to point out how many counties utilize this, how many schools utilize this, give a, I mean, we're talking about how many tests a week, I get that, but it might be a bigger impact to see what, just how wide this is as a regional facility, considering that the state, there is rumor about them trying to set up another lab. You know, we, we do service more than just Sedgwick County, I think that's important for us to note. I also think that the employers depend on rapid testing. I think that that whole sentence could be taken away, that, that today, teachers and students are thriving, employers depend on rapid testing. I think rapid testing capabilities are ensuring that schools and businesses are able to operate, so we could just take those two sentences out, in my opinion, just for, to cut out some of the words, I mean...
So, Akeem adding in that second line, after peak times, serving upwards of 40 other counties outside of Sedgwick County?
Oh.
Forty businesses and whatever, just 40?
Forty other counties.
Customers in 40 counties. Somehow incorporate 40 would take care of that.
You bet.
And I think just the capability and access to mass testing sites locally is vital, we don't need to say we believe, that's a fact, that it's vital to the success of our community. I don't think it's a say, to the happiness.
So, my understanding, Commissioner, is that we're, we're striking today, teachers and students, all the way through...
Employers depend.
Employers depend.
So, it would go, the next sentence would start, "Rapid testing capabilities are ensuring that classrooms or schools and businesses are able to continue operating. The capability to access..."
Yeah, take out "we believe."
"...the capability and access to mass testing and lab sites locally is vital to the overall health of our community during this pandemic, is vital to the recovery of our community during this pandemic."
Do you want to keep overall health?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think.
Our, our, our number of COVID positive cases are trending downward, I mean, that, that is, that's happening, right?
Correct.
We're not optimistic, that is happening. So, you would take out, "We are optimistic that..."
Or maybe, can I suggest, we are optimistic as our numbers?
Okay.
Instead of that.
Do we want to keep Sedgwick County Commissioners? Because we were going to take out, "We are..."
Sure.
Okay. "Are optimistic."
I know we're kind of dialoging here, Commissioner Cruz, Commissioner Howell has his light on, too.
Oh, sorry, we're just, you know, we're editing here, we're just...
Okay, so, sorry, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just, I, first, I agree with the 40, the 40 counties, that was my first comment, but the second thing I would say is, that sentence, it starts out, "Rapid testing," I, I don't know if there's, we're, we're talking about, again, quick, dynamic response, are we talking about the type of test? Because the word rapid is used as an adjective to describe, if you will, antigen testing. I'm not sure if that's what we mean by that, I don't think that's what we want to say. I would rather just use the word robust or dynamic testing capabilities ensure that schools and businesses. To me, that's a, it's a cleaner sentence, and it, and it points out, we're not, I don't, I don't want to defend a particular test process, I want the MDL to do what they do today, all the capabilities that they have today. So, the word, you know, dynamic or robust is a better word, but if you use the word rapid, then it, it kind of points your attention towards a particular type of test, and I'm not sure that's what we intend to do here. Thank you.
Okay.
Can we read that sentence, then? Would that change?
Yeah.
Should it read, my understanding, robust testing capabilities?
Wait, start over, Akeem, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Robust testing capabilities ensure that schools and businesses are able to continue operating.
That's it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks for letting us edit as we go.
Yeah.
We're down to the closing.
Closing paragraph.
That hammer.
"It is our hope to see no interruptions for schools, businesses, and individuals in our community who are seeking COVID-19 testing through your consideration of continued funding. Please contact our county commission if you have any questions, we are available to you, should you need anything."
Maybe you say, "It is Sedgwick County Commission's hope to see," to be, we're consistent with that?
Right.
Or our...
It is vital to our pandemic recovery that we see no interruptions for schools, businesses, or individuals in our community who are seeking COVID testing.
Okay, let's keep, Commissioner Dennis wanted to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we want to add the word free someplace? We hope to see no interruption of free COVID testing for schools and so forth, because we just heard this morning from Hart Springs, what it's going to cost them, if they have to start paying for it, and everybody is going to have to start paying for it if, if we've got to go local, so...
Seeking free, right, in front of the COVID-19, on line two?
Free is, free is notated in the first paragraph.
Okay, well, we could repeat it at the end, I think. Good catch.
I, I would make one other comment.
Commissioner, sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. If this, if this is, if this policy push is designed to, to try to access insurance support from people who have insurance, others like our county, we build who we can, we provide subsidized services for those that can't afford it, don't have any, any ability to pay, so we, we're sensitive to that. I, if the policy push here is to have MDL, if you will, gather insurance information and, and build those, those resources as, as they have opportunity, and then what I'm advocating for is the state would use their ARPA funds to cover any uninsured costs. To me, I don't, I don't mind the idea that we would, you know, transition a little bit to providing some insurance support, if that's what this is really about, but again, I don't mind, I don't mind if you will invite in that policy push, if that's what the state's trying to do. But at the end of the day, whatever is not covered by insurance, I think we ought to continue to ask the state to cover that through their state-funded ARPA grant. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I don't know that, I don't know that KDHE has told us that's the mission here, and I, I also don't have a problem with that if it is a transition process, and there's notification given it on such and such a date, we're going to begin to transition this. I think the challenge, as is, what it presents to MDL, and Andy or Dr. Tomlin, I'm sure could speak to this better, but now they, they would have to begin to capture data, which they already do to some degree, but it could bog a system, and then, I don't even know on the back end systematically, when they go through and try to recoup insurance dollars, what that means to their business practice there. I think that the quickness of this, how fast it's rolling, has not given WSU a chance to maybe react to this. So, I, I think those are all good questions, and as long as it's a transition process, I think maybe it's doable, but, and I don't, I'm not even...
Yeah, that's key. My point of reference is, I went to MedExpress a week or two ago, just, I had a, I had a sniffle, I wasn't sure what it was, I wanted to make sure, because I was going to meet with some people, wanted to make sure it wasn't going to be a problem, so I went and got, went to a MedExpress, had a rapid COVID test, it came back negative, then they, just because I was there, and they had insurance, I had an insurance card, they took that, they also did a PCR test, because I had a sniffle, and so they did both, and I don't know, I don't know how that got paid for, but they did take my insurance card, I'm sure they got paid for, that got paid for by probably an insurance payment, so I, I asked the question, you know, if someone in the community does not have an insurance card, what do you do? I think that's where they rely on this type of support, but again, knowing that that happened, it tells me that there is an option for, for insurance to actually get a bill from these testing providers, and so I, I think MDL needs to, needs to consider that as, as a normal thing for them, but I don't, I'm not sure they're, they're there right now.
Yeah, Commissioner, I, I agree and respect what you're saying, I'm kind of wondering if that kind of clouds up our, our message, we want funding to continue.
I don't know how to say it here, this may not be the right place, but I guess I would just ask my colleagues, if that's what this, if, if we're asking MDL to maybe, you know, expand their, their, their strategy to include insurance payments, that's not a bad thing for them to do potentially, it would help, it would help stretch these ARPA dollars, but anyway, I mean, my, I mean, okay, so I don't know, it belongs in this letter to the, I agree with you, Chairman, thank you.
Yeah, but it's a good point, it's something that, if we can get something approved, if we can get this done through the end of May, then obviously with MDL and WSU, and we'll have a chance to lobby about the insurance factor, so, okay. Okay, I think we've got our closing statement, and if we are going to just do three separate letters, can you make sure you CC, we, we let it be known that the other departments and agencies are CC'd?
Absolutely, sir. I think it'll probably be four, I misspoke, House and Senate, so cheaper, sides of the chamber, or the House.
And just to be clear on process here, I think Akeem takes it back, words missed it with the corrections the commission just recommended, give it all back to you one more time.
Sure.
Put it on letterhead for Chairman's signature, and I think if you could, if we'd asked for a vote for not today, that if you're happy with the theme of this, we make the semantic changes that you've recommended, and then we'd be able to move this thing forward, push it out the door today.
Yeah, that's, I'll, I'll make a motion, since we did kind of edit on the fly, and you reread it, and I think it's official enough for me, I'll make a, a motion that we approve the letter as edited from today's discussion.
Yes, sir.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye, and, and thank you Commissioners, and, and for your input on, on this, I think it was pretty valuable, adjustments, okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommending approval today of items M through Z on consent, with the exception of item M, as in Mary. Mr. Weber needs a little bit more time on that particular item.
Okay, a motion, I'll make a motion that we do the, the items with the exception of M? M as in Mary.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other comments or corrections? No, so, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay, item, we're not, we just took that one out, right?
Correct. Mr. Weber will bring, will bring item M back in the future.
All right, sorry for not tracking correctly. Okay, next item, please.
Committee Reports.
Anybody have anything to report on committees? I don't see any. Next item, please.
Other.
Anybody have any other? There's been a couple of comments about parades and stuff, but I think we covered all that, so, anybody else, any other? I don't see any. Next item, please.
Executive Session.
Commissioner Cruz.
Chairman, will we recess into the Fire District?
Oh, good point, thank you. I had stereo reminding me, so let's recess from the commission meeting, and we'll go into the Fire District meeting, Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Anybody from the public want to address the commission on the fire agenda? And I don't see anybody, I see a nod of no, so we will close the public agenda, and next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item 8, Fire Meeting Minutes of October 6th, 2021.
Commissioners, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Any other comments, corrections? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business. Item B, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on October 28th, 2021.
Hi, Joe.
Good to see you all again.
Yes, sir.
For the record, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts for Fire District Number One, we have one item, and that's a tender truck, and the recommendation is to accept the proposal from Conrad Fire Equipment, and it's in the amount of $476,780.52. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval of this item.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you for the hard work on that, by, by your group.
Yes, sir.
So, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. No comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you again. You bet, Joe. Thanks. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners Tom Stoles again recommending approval of consent item C, Charles, on the fire agenda today.
Okay. Any questions about consent items? Being none. I'll make a motion that we approve items, the consent item as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Being no comments. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Any, next item? There's none. So, we will adjourn the fire commission, District One Fire Board, and we'll return to the regular meeting of the Commissioners. Next item, please.
Executive session.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 15 minutes until 1:05 for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of potentially relocating county departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 1:05.
Okay. I'll second that. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, we will vacate to the boardroom, so others can stay. We'll be back 1:05.